Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Yebukor.
Okay, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff has requested that we move public invited to be heard after the special reports on the agenda in order to separate the comments on NEPA, Environmental Policy Act, from the general comments from the St. Brain Blueprint. So, do I have consensus from council to do that? Everybody okay with that? All right. That's what we'll do. So now we'll jump to Foray.
Foray.
Excuse me. Yeah. The special reports from Superintendent of the St. Brain School District. So Don Haddad is here to make a special presentation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and City Council Members. I really appreciate you allowing us a few minutes to share some of the things that are happening in our schools. One of the things I'd like to touch on first is just a little bit of state of the state, where our schools are, and then what's next on the horizon and what we're planning for. The first thing I would tell you that's exciting is we moved into the seventh largest school district position this year in the state. There's 178 school districts. And we're moving pretty quickly. When I started, we were 10th, and then we moved to 9th, and then 8th, and now we've passed Boulder Valley for 7th. And we've got about 32,000 students, and each year we're growing. This year we grew by about 875, and we're slated to grow anywhere between 700 and 900 students for the next few years, and then it picks up and will be growing by about 1,100 students. And so there's a lot of, a lot of new students coming into our system and bringing their families with them. So, you know, the good thing about that, among other things, is it really helps from a much broader perspective. When you think about all of these families moving into our area, it helps our economy, it helps the values of our homes, it helps to facilitate our businesses and our corporations and, you know, public safety and everything that makes a community special. We feel that our schools are just the central hub that's supporting our community, and we are very, very grateful to you for all of the support that you've given us. You know, a few of the things that we have recently experienced that are very exciting, we just opened a new, you know, we have a great focus on early childhood education, and we just opened up a new center at Mountain View, and several of you are there, and we appreciate that. But that's going to add another 150 students that'll have the opportunity to start school early and get off to a great start, and then work their way all the way through our pre-K, pre-K through 12 system. We're also very excited about the work that's happening with our Innovation Center. You know, many of you know Patty Keonis and the team there, and we have just developed many, many outstanding partnerships with folks like Apple and IBM and a whole host of corporate and business sponsors, and we're looking to hopefully develop an even better, bigger and better Innovation Center here in the near future, and I'll talk about that in just a second. The other initiative that's moving along very, very nicely is our one-to-one initiative with our iPad minis, and we have been phasing them in, so now all of our middle school students have them. And next year will be the first half of our high schools, and the following year, the next half of our high schools, and then elementary school students. And, you know, while this is a paradigm shift for some, actually for many, it truly has taken the walls down in terms of learning. Kids are able now to learn anywhere, anytime, 24/7, and the amount of engagement is really, really amazing. You know, they did a major survey, and study Gallup poll did recently, and it was the largest one in the history of public education, and they were seeking to find out what it is from students' perspectives and teachers' perspectives that makes a student successful, aside from parenting, because that's always going to be the single most important factor. But what they did is they identified three areas. One of them was, does the student have hope for the future? Do they see a better future for themselves? The second one was engagement, and the third one was well-being. Well, if you think about these things, the engagement piece with these iPad minis and the focus on technology has really taken that hands-on learning to a whole new level, and not just with our high school students, but also with our middle school students, elementary school students, all the way down into our preschool and kindergarten students. And what we're experiencing would not be possible without the great partnership that we have in terms of the broadband here in the city. We are able to get every student online, every teacher online, throughout our entire school district, and we would only be using anywhere from 8 to 10% of our bandwidth capacity. And when you talk about an infrastructure like that, I had the opportunity to travel back to Washington DC for a technology summit, and there were about 100 school districts there, identified as a future-ready summit, and they're going to have 12 follow-up regional summits. But one of the things that President Obama said that was really striking is, you know, somewhere around 40% of the schools throughout our nation have access to the internet, and the other 60% don't. And so they're embarking on this initiative, but when you think about that, because it's so much more than just getting the tools, you have to have the infrastructure, and schools just don't have that. And the ironic thing is you can go into any Starbucks, you can go into any restaurant, and you can log in. There's Wi-Fi. But we need to make sure that that's available to all of our students, not only here in St. Brain, but throughout the state and beyond. It's, it's a huge issue. The other thing I wanted to share with you, just to focus a little bit on our high schools, because we've talked a lot about our early childhood education and some of the things that are happening with our middle schools. But with our high schools, we've created now what you might want to refer to as a series of mini colleges, and they provide a comprehensive education for everyone. So if you look at it, we have 10 high schools, and I'll just go around the horn. At Lyons, we've now implemented, and this is over and above, a very rigorous traditional program with honors and advanced placement and traditional courses and courses for struggling learners. So this is not in place of, this is over and above. But we've had a new partnership with CSU with their global online for our students out in Lyons. At Meade High School, they're developing an energy academy with several corporate sponsorships. When you go to Frederick, we have a project lead program and CU Gold Program. Project Lead is an engineering program. If you come down into Erie, we're opening up a capstone with our advanced placement program and also an aerospace program in partnership with several aerospace corporations. If you come down in Niwata, we have the International Baccalaureate Program. You come up to Silver Creek, and we have our Leadership Academy. You go to Longmont High School, we have the Medical and Biosciences Academy, and then obviously you go to Skyline, and you have the Performing and Visual Arts Program and the STEM Program. And then we also have our Career Development Center with literally hundreds of students pursuing careers, cosmetology, dentistry, printing trades, et cetera. And then we have our global online school that has been for high school students, and now will be moving down into the middle school ranks. And in each of these schools, we have many students who are graduating with their first year of college under their belt at no charge, and then they go and become a sophomore in college once they leave our high school. So we're very, very proud of that. Something else that's on the horizon is what's called a PTEC program, and it's a pathways through technology program. And this is in partnership with IBM, and there's also a bill that Brandon Schaefer is helping us on with the legislature, and several of the legislators are down there, and they are going to be submitting this bill soon. And what it is, is it's a six-year program within the high school. They have many of them, and when I say many, about 25 of them east of the Mississippi that IBM has been sponsoring. We would be the first west of the Mississippi, and students would go to school for six years, and when they would finish, they would have a two-year degree, and they would also be first in line for a job at IBM or whichever corporation they happen to be doing an internship with, you know, making really good money. And so this will expand the pool of engineers that we have throughout, not only our school system, but hopefully we can grow this in Colorado as well. So that's something that's exciting on the horizon. And then I'll, I'll just close, because there's so many other things that I can talk about, but as we think about the future and I talk about our growth, we're going to be growing again by, as I said at the beginning, 800 to 1,000 kids. Beyond that, 1,100 each year for quite some time, and that's going to cause us to need more space. And so what we're kind of looking at, and it's, obviously, we never know until we know, and the Board of Education will ultimately make this decision, but we're looking at a bond initiative about a year and a half out in 2016, so not this next coming year, but the following year. And what we're doing tentatively, and this is tentative, it's nothing that's set in stone, but we'll be looking in Longmont to add on to Blue Mountain Elementary School, to add on to Eagle Crest Elementary School, to add on to Altona Middle School, and then to do some renovation in Silver Creek, because that southwest part of Longmont is growing very, very quickly. We'll also do some renovation work, you know, at Longmont High School and in the center parts of Longmont and Skyline, and so all of the Longmont schools will either get additional capacity or renovation to existing capacity and upgrades. And we'll also be looking at our capacity issues out in Lyons, because our elementary school is full. We don't know if we'll be moving the fifth graders over to the high school or just expanding capacity at the elementary school, and we'll be looking into that. Out at Meade, we're going to be adding to Meade Elementary School, renovate one wing and add a second floor, because the growth out there is pretty quick. We've done quite a bit to the middle school already, and then at the high school, we'll be adding another wing that will add capacity, because the core facility will hold about, you know, 1,300, 1,400 kids, the auditorium, the lunchroom, the gymnasium, that's the core facility. But we're getting more and more kids, and there's some developments that are slated for out in the Meade area that are pretty significant. And if you come out into the tri-town area, we'll be looking at another elementary school in between Meade and the tri-towns, and we'll also be adding on to Frederick High School, which is a model that should seat around 2,000 kids with their core facility. So we'll be adding a wing there, and maybe extending the Career Development Center out to the east side of our district to create more capacity for all of the children in our schools at this point. In Erie, we'll be building a pre-K through 8 in a plot of land that's just north of the high school. We'll also be adding on to Erie High School, because that school is reaching its capacity, and no matter when you drive out there, there's growth. Niwata will be doing some renovations inside of the building, auditorium, a new library, a new computer lab, a world languages lab, and then some renovations around the elementary school, including a parking lot. Out in the Erie area as well, we will be adding some parking spaces to the Red Hawk and, you know, some areas around there. Then if you come into Longmont, I already shared with you what the plan is there, and these are all things that'll be happening to address capacity. We'll also be looking to put cameras in in all of our elementary schools. We've got them now inside and outside of the high schools. The middle schools, we have them on the outside. We're finishing up the inside right now, and we'll add to the elementary schools so that all of our schools have these. And then we're looking at a new Innovation Center where we can partner with different, different organizations, a larger one that will host more students and more corporations and become really something even more special than what we already have. And if I stop and think about it a little bit, there might be some more things, but that's kind of the gist of what we're looking at. Great time right now in St. Brain. It's always exciting and it's never boring. And right now, we've got a great community, we've got great students, we've got great teachers and staff, and a lot of support from all of you and a wonderful Board of Education. We have a number of our Board of Education members over here. I see Bob Smith, I've heard Debbie Lammers, what else? I saw John Creighton, Joey, Paula Peters. So, I don't know if you can hear me, but thanks to all of the board members for showing up. And I, Bob, would you like to come up and say a few words? Is that all right?
Please.
Okay. That sounds great. And thank you for your time. I really, there's a lot of information, but I just wanted to give you an update on our schools.
Congratulations again for being able to go out and meet with President Obama and win all these awards. I mean, you're doing a great job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, as you recognize, I'm Bob Smith, president of the school board. Thanks for the opportunity to just say a couple of words. As you, as you recognize clearly, I think we have the best superintendent in the state. That's what Don didn't say. He's been well-recognized both statewide and nationally. Many of the accomplishments, I would point out, would not have been possible not only without Don and his staff, but in a state where we get per pupil funding 25 to 30% below the national average, in a state where we are surrounded by other states that spend anywhere from $2,500 to $6,000 more than the state of Colorado spends. We couldn't do what Don's talked about without the support of this community and the two levies that we've already, mill levy overrides that we've passed. It simply would not have been possible. It also would not have been possible without the collaboration of the city and the staff. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. That's part of what makes the city unique in this community, and it wouldn't have been possible without the staff that Don's brought on board, so they really deserve a lot of recognition. So that's really all I would have to say.
Well, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for that?
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. So, we're going to have a presentation by Tim Sugarneck?
Exactly. Mayor, the next item is a public hearing on the National Environmental Policy Act scoping for the St. Brain Creek Improvement Project and Flood Recovery of the St. Brain Greenway.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we will be discussing the NEPA scoping for the St. Brain Creek Improvement Project. Just briefly, this project is designed to restore the greenway, which includes not only the infrastructure, but also the creek that was damaged in the September 2013 flood. Additionally, this project is looking at creating a 100-year flood channel that will, from Airport Road down to Left Hand Creek. And then in the sandstone reach area, the purpose is to restore this area, stabilize the creek channel. So, the, so the reason we're here is, the first phase of this project will be funded using FEMA funding from the Public Assistant Alternative Procedures Project, or Pilot Program. And so this requires you developing an environmental assessment following the NEPA process. Additionally, this place is in good position to get other federal funding as we move through the process for the creek project. So, the National Environmental Policy Act that we're following to develop this environmental assessment has a variety of phases. So we're just now in the first phase, the project scoping. And this, we're having this public hearing to invite the public to provide comments in regards to items that they think we should consider as we develop the design for the project. And as we go through this project, there will be other opportunities for the public to participate. Once we, outside of this process, we'll also be allowing comments on the alternative once those come out this summer, which we'll discuss in our presentation later this evening. And then we'll have the draft environmental assessment for comments, and then once we have a final draft in public, we'll also comment on that. Under the NEPA, the following items are evaluated, not only are they the natural systems like wetlands and flood plains, but they also look at environmental justice issues, social issues surrounding the, the, or within the project boundaries, sorry. They also look at items from noise and traffic and a variety of other impacts that might happen during construction as well as after the project is built. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to Mayor for the...
All right. So the public hearing tonight is specifically related to the NEPA Environmental Policy Act. So if you have general comments on the St. Brain Improvement Project and the St. Brain Blueprint, please hold your comments until public invited to be heard. So at this point, I will open up the public hearing on the NEPA, and first up is, you have three minutes to speak, is Ruby Bowman.
I have photos also.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Let me just get my pictures.
Sure.
Oh, okay, I see.
Ms. Bowman, can you pull that down a little bit?
I'm trying to get these pictures. Okay. There.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. In the summer of 2013, the city completed its 100-year flood mitigation on Left Hand Creek in the Southmore Park neighborhood where I live. When floods arrived, parts of my neighborhood were nonetheless flooded. Left Hand Creek overflowed its banks, causing Missouri Avenue, causing Missouri Avenue, which is adjacent to the greenway, to become the raging Missouri River. Left Hand Drive between Park and, the Park and Bowen had standing floodwaters. Stream banks eroded, causing the waiting pool to collapse at the park and displacing the pedestrian bridge, and homes were flooded. In the weeks after the flood, I saw piles of damaged carpeting and furniture at collection points on Missouri Avenue. The flood damage could have been worse, though. If homes had been built in the 70s directly adjacent to Left Hand Creek where Missouri Avenue is, the damage to homes and buildings and people's lives would have been devastating. Lives might have, might have been lost. Extensive development, residential and commercial directly adjacent to the creek is unadvisable. There is no significant stream buffer to minimize flood damage on areas adjacent to the St. Brain. I can't get it. I'm having problems with this. Can someone help me? Go ahead. I was further back. Okay. The flood damage... Sure.
I'll do that. Oh, okay, I see.
Ms. Bowman, can you pull that down a little bit?
I'm trying to get these pictures. Okay. Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. In the summer of 2013, the city completed its 100-year flood mitigation on Left Hand Creek in the Southmore Park neighborhood where I live. When floods arrived, parts of my neighborhood were nonetheless flooded. Left Hand Creek overflowed its banks, causing Missouri Avenue, causing Missouri Avenue, which is adjacent to the greenway, to become the raging Missouri River. Left Hand Drive between Park and, the Park and Bowman had standing floodwaters. Stream banks eroded, causing the waiting pool to collapse at the park and displacing the pedestrian bridge, and homes were flooded. In the weeks after the flood, I saw piles of damaged carpeting and furniture at collection points on Missouri Avenue. The flood damage could have been worse, though. If homes had been built in the 70s directly adjacent to Left Hand Creek where Missouri Avenue is, the damage to homes and people's lives would have been devastating. Lives might have been lost. Extensive development, residential and commercial directly adjacent to the creek is unadvisable. There is no significant stream buffer to minimize flood damage on areas adjacent to the St. Brain. I can't get it. I'm having problems with this. Can someone help me? Go ahead. I was further back. The flood damage could have been worse, though, if homes had been built in the 70s directly adjacent to the Left Hand Creek where Missouri Avenue is. The damage to homes and people's lives would have been devastating. Lives might have been lost. Extensive development, residential, commercial directly adjacent to the creek is unadvisable. There is no significant stream buffer to minimize flood damage on the areas adjacent to the St. Brain. The stream buffer should be expanded beyond the 150-foot setback. Considering the threat of global warming, there is a good chance Longmont will experience another flood similar to or worse than the one in 2013. I can say with confidence, the St. Brain 100-year flood mitigation will not contain a 500 or 1,000-year flood. As a taxpayer, I don't want to keep paying for structural damage every time we have major flooding. Let's be smart and expand the vegetative stream buffer and let, and keep residential housing and extensive development away from the creek. Another reason to expand the buffer is to keep the polluted storm water runoff out of the St. Brain. Each year, 10 trillion gallons of storm water runs off buildings, parking lots, and roads. Can I continue? Because I was having trouble with mine.
I'm going to have to let everybody else. I'm sorry.
How long do I have?
Three minutes.
Well, that's not, that's not even a tenth of the time I need. So this is not really a valid hearing, and it was never intended to be a valid hearing. And what you've heard from the city staff about the purpose of this hearing is completely false. The purpose of an environmental assessment, there's only one purpose, and that's to determine whether the project would have a significant effect on the environment. Because if they can somehow cover up or obfuscate the impact on the environment of this project, then they don't have to do an environmental impact statement. So this whole thing is orchestrated to, towards a finding of no significant impact, a Fonzie. The reason this is a farce is because I can't get any information about what the proposal is. And according to the rules that FEMA has to follow, they not only have to have a proposal, but they have to have at least one alternative, and we don't even have a proposal. And without a proposal, I cannot go in to what the impacts are. I mean, no dimensions. I got here early and talked to a CH2M Hill person. The reason we hired CH2M Hill is they told us that they could schlep this thing through without following the requirements of NEPA, without doing an environmental impact statement. And all the environmental impact statement is, is taking a hard look at the environmental impact of the proposal and the alternatives, the practical alternatives. Why are you afraid to do that? Why is the city afraid to do that? It's the fundamental dishonesty that I'm going to harp on until we get Councilmember Levison, Finley, Mayor Coombs, and Brian Bagley out of office in this election. Everything this council does is dishonest, and they go along with the dishonest plans of the city manager. There is not a shred of a proposal. I couldn't get any information as to how they're doing this flood control. None. And that's what they want to do. They want, they're calling it, when did the St. Brain River become St. Brain Creek? They're calling it a creek now to minimize the significance. I couldn't even find out the city reach is where they're going to modify the channel and do, it's going to be a huge excavation project. And I asked the CH2M Hill representative, well, how long, how many river miles are you going to modify the channel? And he said, oh, we don't know that yet. This is a farce, and it's going to cost us money. If somebody out there will come up with the $350 to file a complaint in federal court, I will follow, follow a complaint in my own name and make them do it right.
Thank you. Ernest Strangney?
My name's Ernest Stranga. I'm with Boulder County and Boulder County Parks and Open Space, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the county and the Parks and Open Space Department. We truly appreciate the partnerships we've had with the city, both pre-flood and post-flood, and are currently working, we have an IGA with the city to work together on our jointly-owned open space property, the Pechel property. And we've worked with Tim Sugar and Dan Wolford and others, and truly appreciate that. We appreciate the city's goals for the project in terms of public safety, economic and social development opportunities, environmental protection. But we just wanted to point out as part of the NEPA process, some of the significant resources that occur along St. Brain Creek to make sure that they're part of the document and are analyzed as part of that. As you know, Boulder County has preserved up to about nine miles of St. Brain Creek, going all the way up to South St. Brain Creek and down east of, down to the Pechel property. Many of these sites have well-developed cottonwood and willow riparian forests. Just fairly recently, the county updated their environmental resource element as part of their Boulder County comp plan, and we have identified 63 species of special concern that either occur or have a very good potential to occur along St. Brain Creek. And therefore, a large portion of the area is considered critical wildlife habitat by the county. As you know, there's the federally threatened problem of the metal jumping mouse and then numerous other species that do, of course, occur along the creek. And one of the things that we're also concerned about is the native fisheries that occur on the sites. The Colorado Parks and Wildlife has documented the St. Brain Creek as having one of the highest diversities of native fishes, fish species along the Front Range. Some of the potential impacts that we're concerned about are the loss of the streamside riparian vegetation, especially the mature trees, some of the structure within that, structural diversity within the riparian corridors from the trees to the shrubs, grasses, et cetera, making sure that that's there. Reduction in shading, which increases water temperature, which has impacts on species. Also, just impacts to in-stream habitats, such things as gravel bars, scour holes, riffles, that are all important for wildlife species. Other potential impacts are impairments to fish passage up, you know, up and down the stream, impacts to low-flow conditions, reduction in water quality, siltation, competition from exotic species, and then other impacts to the natural stream and some of the natural stream processes. We just want to make sure that those potential impacts are analyzed through the NEPA process, that we, the city fully documents the significant resources along St. Brain Creek, looks at those potential impacts and some of the long-term repercussions for the environmental resources along the creek, and then to find solutions that limit those impacts to the best of your abilities, such as natural channel design, maintaining, preserving the native habitat, and coordinating with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll jump into public invited to be heard. Excuse me. Yeah, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this first before I close the public? Come forward.
Thank you. I'm Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I wasn't really prepared for this hearing tonight. I'm glad that we're having a start, and I hope it's not a conclusion. As you have heard from all of the speakers, the process is far from being fully understood or investigated, and that is absolutely crucial. Although I am a fanatic in favor of nature, I do understand having a viable city, and I've been down to San Antonio once, so I see how it can be done well if it's compact. But I haven't seen the proposals or been able to study them and to see if there's any diversionary channel to keep wildlife fully accessible. I don't know any of that, and I think the study needs to be more public. And, you know, I've been pretty much active in voting rights primarily, and so it's like, what does that mean? Well, that means participation in government. That's what democracy is all about. I recall about eight years ago, there were studies done by one of the universities and people presented their projects, and some of that was looked at by city council, but it was preliminary, and I don't think anything happened with it. Those were some very nicely presented ideas by the students. And of course, when we had the whole mall idea, we were contemplating having a mixed residential, you know, commercial zone that would extend if it wouldn't be too, too large or too impactful. So I just hope the council and the public study this in full depth, because from what I've heard tonight, it seems like the preliminary work has not been completed yet, and we need to know more before we can make formal decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this public hearing at this time?
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. Nobody has any idea what the next flood's going to do, but we all know there's going to be one. You need to be really, really careful about what you build along that creek, because if it's too close, it's going to get washed away, and there's going to be some disasters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak at public hearing? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levison?
Mayor, I was hoping you wouldn't close the public hearing. You know, we may have a three-minute limit on regular public invited to be heard, but we've got an issue this evening on a public hearing of a very complex project, and I could barely keep up with the laundry list that the staff member from Boulder County listed, with very few specifics. And I think that I would like to propose that we allow Ms. Bowman to come back, because she had some very in-depth comments that were well-thought-out, and, you know, that's part of the public hearing process. And she did have some trouble with her slides, which is not really her fault, but I would propose that we allow her to finish her comments. So that's my motion, to allow Ms., to allow the public hearing to be continued just for the purposes of Ms. Bowman to finish her comments.
Well, we'd have to do it for everybody. Everybody...
I mean, there's no rule that says when we do a public hearing on a very complex issue, that it's public invited to be heard that's three minutes. We could allow, you know, her to finish her comments. And so I'm moving that we don't close the public hearing and that we allow Ms. Bowman to finish her comments.
Okay. Been moved in second. Councilmember Bagley?
My comment is for something else, so I'll wait. Sorry.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, if we're going to do that, we're going to have to open it back up for everyone.
I agree.
It should not just be for one person. So...
But that's the way we should vote, then.
Because, you know, we can get a letter, and I do recall we did get an email from Ms. Bowman. I haven't seen anything from Boulder County yet, so I would expect a letter coming from Boulder County and the commissioners regarding this. But if we're going to open it up, you need to open it back up and, you know, are we going to give additional two, additional five, additional 10, additional 15? What's that proposal?
Well, she made her motion. It's been seconded.
Well, I think I'd like to, sorry.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor, for calling on me. I would like to amend my motion then, if, besides Ms. Bowman, if there's somebody else that wanted to, you know, say another two minutes that we could, we could add to their two minutes, to be fair. And I just think that when you have this complex matter, you have to give a good public hearing time. So I'm amending my motion.
Okay, so the motion is to allow everybody that spoke an extra two minutes. Okay, let's, if they want to. Okay, I guess let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0. Okay, okay, so Rudy Bowman. Give us some time to get the things queued up.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. I just have one paragraph left. Another reason to expand the buffer is to keep polluted storm water runoff out of the St. Brain. Each year, 10 trillion gallons of storm water runs off buildings, parking lots, and roads and ends up polluting rivers and streams. The EPA says storm water runoff is one of the greatest threats to clean water in America. The voluntary onsite stormwater treatments, as described in some of the documents for the St. Brain, such as rainwaters and bioswells and private properties near the creek, is not sufficient. The illustrations I saw show many impervious surfaces, multiple buildings and roads next to the creek. The runoff from these hard surfaces will exponentially increase once redevelopment is complete. We need an expanded vegetative stream buffer as part of the St. Brain flood mitigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Thompson, would you like to come down and...
Just the tip of the iceberg about what's involved here. What CHM2, the information that was presented to the public in the city council communications for tonight, it makes no sense. It came from CH2M Hill, and it's crazy. They said that they're going to widen the channel, but they're going to improve the stream morphology, which is the ability that they, they put that under the topic of natural stream function, and they're selling this. They've got some, something they're selling is that they're going to make it have natural stream function so that the channel maintains itself, clears out sediment, and this sort of thing. If there's a problem with the natural function of the St. Brain River, it's because of the diversions of waters, because the stream flow is less than the natural flow or the native flow. So one thing we need to know is what is the native flow of the St. Brain? And then to correct for that and to restore natural function, you don't widen the channel, you have to narrow the channel, and that's very expensive. That's what they're doing. That's what's going to make the cost of the Windy Gap Filling Project go so high, because the mitigation on that is to make the channel about 10% as wide as the native channel is, because we're taking so much water out of the upper Colorado River. Basically, what that's going to do is destroy the Colorado River, and so now we've got this, they say you don't improve the morphology of a stream by making the channel wider, which is what the communication says. You do it by making it narrower. So you've got two completely different things going on. Flood control is completely different from this natural function. You've just been sold a bill of goods.
Thank you. Ernest, would you like to come down and... Nope? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Again, like I said, I'm not particularly prepared, but all of these issues are very complex, and I'd like to reaffirm what Mr. Kenworthy and others have said. Yes, there will be another flood. And they don't come in as wide a periods as they used to be. They tend to come quite often, and we'll be doing more so. So I just think these studies really need to be more thorough. And I'm also, I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Thompson that there's...
necessarily agree with Mr. Thompson that there's an insidious conspiracy going on, but certainly there's a rush job going on. And however you evaluate that, uh, the public does need to be more involved. And also, I was shocked, just the last couple of months I've been here in St. Rain Creek, but it's always been St. Rain River up until lately. I don't know where the creek came from. I thought it became a river, at least at Lyons, where south and north joined. So, um, keep all this in mind, and I thank you so much for debating the idea of having democratic input, and I am so happy that council voted unanimous to do that, and it wasn't a whole lot of trouble. Uh, it's been, what, four or five minutes, six minutes, and now the hearing? Let's go to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. And James Kimber? Okay.
Can we reopen? Can I speak?
Well, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Michael Schatzmeyer, 12001 Twilight Street, Longmont. Uh, as you all know, for several years before the actual flood, I'd lobbied for the city to do actually what they're doing right now. Uh, and I applaud the excellent work that the staff has done. I'm very grateful for all this hard work and, and expedited work, and nature of what they're doing too. The assault on nature is not what the city is doing, the assault on nature is what has been done for the past hundred years, and that is take a river channel that was this wide and widen it, actually, if the natural river channel would be, if the natural river channel was this wide, what in effect has happened is widening it to this wide, over a mile, by pinching off the river at bridges, pinching off the river at roads, damming up the, the backwater with raised roads. We've actually taken a flood event and exacerbated it about 10 times what it would normally be. And we flooded this, created, created this lake that flows through this industrial commercial area, and have all of that toxic chemical washing back into the watershed, affecting lives, affecting businesses, affecting the economy. Uh, that is the assault on nature. What we need to do is what the city's doing, and that is take a flood event through an urban corridor and have it pass through the city safely. Floods are great in rural areas because they replenish the soils. They're not good in urban areas. The riparian corridor, I believe, needs to be shrunk, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, I hope city council doesn't give a final determination on the riparian corridor today, and there's further opportunity for public input. But the bottom line, you need to look at nature and wildlife in a holistic perspective. Holistically, we're facing climate change. I believe in climate change, I believe we're facing a lot of extraneous, uh, existential, uh, events, uh, and we need to allow the city to happen and densify in the city core. The, the, the way you protect nature and wildlife is you allow cities to become denser. A, an overbuilt greenwash area through the core of town does not allow, uh, property owners to take the best advantage of their properties, does not allow economic developments to flourish, it does not allow the river corridor to become a multimodal transportation district where people can walk and bicycle and not have to own a car. The river corridor allows an opportunity for affordable housing and for seniors. Uh, all of these issues, as Sarah, Councilmember Levison said, these issues are complex, and I'm hoping that we have more opportunity to provide public input before the city council gives a final determination on this. If they do it tonight, I would suggest they reduce the riparian corridor to at least 50 feet, or at least allow, uh, variances in the setback in specific instances where it can be justified. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in this public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just, I have a, I guess I have a couple thoughts, um, and I'd like to respond as a person, addressing people. Um, first of all, my understanding is that, uh, this is just the beginning. By the ti- I mean, we have a, we will have a mall and a Sam's Club before we actually approve the project that we're all talking about. And so, um, tonight's just kinda like, I mean, the analogy, I, I always get teased at work 'cause I use all these analogies, but it's like, we're arguing, arguing over the call of the fourth quarter when we're just teeing up the ball tonight. Literally, the public is involved. This is, this is a process that will last from now until early 2016, when we'll all come back, and staff will say, this is what we're doing, this is the impact, here's what we wanna do, and we'll have a chance to, to discuss. Am I missing it, or is that, that's what I thought we were doing?
So, Mayor, Council, yes, this is the very beginning of the process, and it's a scoping meeting, and the intent is that for the public to provide things that they would like us to consider in the design. So we do not have alternatives yet, we'll have those in the summer, and so this outlines the various opportunities that the public will be able to provide input, and we've already had some, just open houses, to get some of this basic input of things we should consider, consider just exactly like Boulder County provided items that we should consider in our process.
So we should expect that, I mean, whether it's the most, uh, I can't pronounce your last name, Mike, Schatzmeyer? Okay. What, whether it's the most recent gentleman who spoke, or whether the Ms. Bowman's concerns, they were heard, they will be addressed, and when we have the record of decision sometime winter of late 15 or early 2016, that's when the record of decision occurs, correct?
Correct, and we're headed towards, um, the end of 2015 to, or complete the environmental assessment. Um, just one other note I wanna make, um, there were a variety of topics that were brought up, and the environmental assessment is specifically on the River Creek Channel. It's not on if there's potential for other development, because those are all conceptual in the future, we have no idea if those will happen, and so that is not a part of what FEMA's looking at, as well as they do not fund private development. So, when we are looking at this, and that's why we did, we're having two different council topics tonight, to separate the issues, even though they're integrated, but for this particular, uh, federal action that we need to deal with, it's on the Creek Channel and the flood recovery.
Uh, and I guess my, my final comment is a, is one of hope, you know, I would hope. Um, it seems that whenever we're worried as a community about something that's gonna happen, I don't care if it's composting, or if it's, uh, the river corridor, or if it's fracking, or if it's, uh, uh, I, I, name it, but immediately we start accusing one another of being in each other's pockets, or being ideologues, or, and I'm a bum, I'll admit it. I'll get that off the table, I'm a bum, I'm dishonest, whatever, but I can tell you right now that Councilmember Levison, Finley, and Mayor Coombs, I mean, they each get $1,000 a month to do this. $1,000 a month, and there's more, I mean, me per- gross. $921, $921 net, you know? I mean, so, I mean, I'm, I'm always a little shocked, you know, I, I, I make a crappy politician, but I'm always shocked at how some members of the public are hard on us, and be hard on me, I'm thick-skinned, I'm an attorney, I get all the time. But, uh, but as far as, as my fellow council members go, I mean, I, I might not always agree with them, but I always know that they're speaking from, I don't care if it's, and all, all of them, all six of my colleagues here are doing a phenomenal job, and doing the best they can, and there's absolutely zero, zero. Um, any, I've never seen anything that indicates anybody's in anybody's pocket, or doing anything other than just voting their conscience, doing their research, and doing the best they can.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Oh, I see on the website, in the upcoming events, it, it shows the St. Rain Improvement, public hearing, and NIPA scoping meeting tonight. I'm assuming, and I would hope, that that would be a little bit, you know, the website looks great, first of all, and if you type in NIPA in search, you can find this meeting on various pages. So I would hope while this is a, um, you know, you have, you have your dates here, but that if anybody can just go to the website, that it's a little bit more prominently displayed. This and the blueprint and everything else is coming up, you know, those are gonna be topics that we need the public's input on. Um, and I like what, what Councilmember Bagley said, is that to point out any member of council for, um, probably not the best, I, 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 along with Councilmember Levison, we, we've been here a little bit the longest, but in knowing each and every mayor that has sat in that chair or other council chairs, I have never suspected anyone do, uh, doing anything nefarious by trying to look out for what's in the best interest of the city. We all have different, different ways of getting, or, uh, different ways of, we all want, we all want what's best for Longmont, we just have different ways of getting there. If everyone keeps an open mind, we can achieve a lot. So, just a thought.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. Um, Kim, could you come back to the podium and put something up, because I had just a question about this idea of the scoping and the items?
So what would you...
There was a list of what would be part of the scope. So, um, first of all, um, is there the requirement under, uh, NIPA that each and every one of those items would be addressed?
We will evaluate each of those items.
Yes, they're listed. Well, how would you, um, I guess, um, no one's talked about environmental justice, um, or, um, air quality, I guess, and, um, noise, and, and would those be simply addressed during the time of construction or after construction, what the impacts would be? And then my second question is, I don't understand what the difference is between environmental assessment and what we commonly hear in the media as environmental impact statement. Would there be an environmental impact statement to follow the EA?
So, on your second question, I'll address that first. So, right now, as we've spoken to FEMA and the information that we have on the river corridor, we think an environmental assessment will satisfy the need. However, during the process, if some new issue comes up, it could develop into an environmental impact statement, so which is the next step up? And it has to do with the complexity of an issue, so, and whether there's alternatives, and there's a variety of items that go into that, and it'll be up to the federal government to make that determination.
Okay. And then, so, um, the first question is about how do you, um, the evaluation or assessment would be during construction or the impacts long-term?
So, we'll consider both, um, especially noise and traffic. So during construction, it'll be trucks moving material around, we'll need to evaluate the impact to the roads, and then also, long-term, does the project create any more issues with those items identified above? And so this is a more natural system project, so a lot of these items listed aren't necessarily what you might traditionally see for this type of project, but clearly during construction, and we'll definitely evaluate all these items.
And I, I'm just focused a little bit on the environmental justice piece, because, um, you know, the city has done some mitigation of the Royal Mobile Home Park, but of the other mobile home car, park that was severely damaged, um, what would happen if the assessment would be to say for environmental justice, those folks need to be, um, moved on, and that land, um, not used for housing any longer? You know, where would we, um, address the issue of, of, you know, the, the folks not being able to have a home anymore?
So if that was an alternative, we definitely would have to evaluate that. Um, ideally, the city, we don't want to displace people if we don't have to, so I think we would try to develop alternative, so that scenario would not happen. However, at this point, we don't have the alternatives, and Nick can talk about this more, so we don't know all the land that we need yet for this project, so, so, yeah, we'll just have, that'll be something we'll have to evaluate as we move forward.
And since none of us are experts in this, what other typical things could be added on to the scope besides the list you've given us?
Um, if there are other items that somebody feels like is gonna be impacted through this project, we can add that, and looking at that, I think most of the items that have been discussed here are included in those above. I don't, if someone else has something, we'd obviously add it to our list.
Well, so stormwater, what was mentioned, stormwater, uh, would that fall under water quality, or would that follow under the EPA? You know, we have a, a permit, we're level-two permitting for stormwater and drainage, so would we have to add the federal stormwater management program, um, as a scoping item?
So that it, um, water quality is considered under floodplains, that's already listed, so that item is already considered in this process.
And so the one other part of the, um, the drainage issue that I'm aware of is that there is also significant impact for stormwater runoff during construction, and that's a very high concern of EPA. So how, I'd like to that to be, you know, addressed in the scope of work, to make sure that, you know, the best management practices, um, are followed, and that we do both during construction, and what would, um, be, uh, adjacent in areas would not negatively, you know, impact the, uh, stream and water quality.
Right, and we do have to get, well, our local permit as well as state and federal permits for any construction project, not this, this one, to address erosion control.
Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, Kim, you might wanna stay here. Um, so I, I do under, I think all of us understand that we're talking here about the scope for the St. Rain Greenway, not the St. Rain Blueprint. However, the St. Rain Greenway continually references the St. Rain Blueprint, and repeatedly says that it must be consistent with the St. Rain Blueprint, and, uh, that seems to mean that it's almost subservient, and I don't, I, yeah, I know, Harold's saying no. And that's, I know that's not intended, but that seems to be the way it seems, that, that phrasing seems to make it subservient, and I just wanna, I'm hoping that they stand on their own, and, because my concern is, although I know that this is, uh, there's this, these issues, I, there is an element that I'm, that I'm very concerned about, and that is that the housing, that any housing we build needs to be, I wanna be sure that these people sign off on the fact that it's safe. None of us wanna see anybody endangered down there, nobody in this room wants to see that. And so, um, under public, uh, health and safety, I'm just hoping that they will sign off on the fact that anything that we build, and, and actually give some, um, some direction, and minimum and maximum, um, needs for, to guarantee public health and safety for any housing that is built down there, say, near Main Street, which is the logical place for it, or a little bit further down. Okay.
Yeah, so, um, for another step, for FEMA outside the environmental assessment, is once this project is done, FEMA will come in and reassess what should be the 100-year floodplain, so that will address where it's appropriate, or whether people have to pay flood insurance for where they locate their homes around the area. And then as far as, well, if they're within a floodplain, but, and the city has regulations as, as far as whether people can develop in a floodplain.
There's actually another process that you have to go through, so once you were, if, if we were to proceed with this project, and once we go through and actually, uh, allow the St. Rain to carry the storm flows for 100 years, you still have to then submit all of that documentation back to the FEMA, or back to FEMA in, in terms of their floodplain group, and then they come in and say, here's what the floodplain is based on the information that you provided us, and then that sets the requirements that you have to put in place based on where you are in that analysis. So that is an additional step that you have to go through. The best example to give you is when we went through and worked on the left-hand project, we had to provide that information to FEMA. And so if you remember, the floodplain in that area, and the flood was, the floodplain was larger in terms of the 100-year flood, and then when we actually built the project, that was reduced, and FEMA has to verify that, am I saying it right?
I'm saying it exactly right, I'm just gonna show.
And so, and so what that really means is, it was here, then it was here, but we, we submit the data to FEMA, and then FEMA analyzes the data, and they say, yes, we agree with you, or no, we don't, and, and here's what it looks like, and, um, and he will show you exactly what we're talking about.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Nick Wool from Engineering Services Manager, and that's, Harold is exactly right. This is a map that you might remind, I recall that we showed you of Left Hand Creek... This is a map that you might, I recall that we showed you of Left Hand Creek prior, this is the existing conditions floodplain. This was before our project, and you can see each one of those red homes in there was in the floodplain at that point in time. They were, they were there. This... This was the post-project floodplain. And I will say, if you look, you'll see that as designed, Missouri River, or Missouri, Ruby's Missouri River, Missouri Avenue was planned to be carrying water. As you can see, a lot of that street flooding was still there, but we removed, but about 172 homes are no longer in the floodplain because of the reduction in the size of that floodplain. So then, you have to go through FEMA, you tell them, you submit to them, say, this is what we're going to build. They said, if you build that, then we'll agree that the floodplain will change. We then built it, then had to submit them the as-built. And then they've now submitted new mapping, and you'll see the blue is exactly what we submitted to them, and that is the new floodplain down there. So all of those 172 homes that would have been, I will say, severely damaged most likely during the 2013 flooding, but weren't because that project had been completed, no longer are required to have flood insurance. And this, this change, the light blue, is that new regulatory floodplain. So that's the process that you go through, and that would be very similar to what we would do on the St. Braine, and that we've done in other areas.
Councilmember, oh, go ahead. Thank you, Nick. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Nick, thanks for that explanation. For those of you regarding, looking at public notice, you did see that there were several dates that were on that. Can you get that back up, the dates you had? And then I'll just read this from our packet, it's actually in our packet. Public notice, notice for public scoping meeting was provided in the following venues. Times call for two weeks prior to the March 24 meeting. Letters with notice mailed to 962 property owners in Longmont within the NEPA project boundary and in areas impacted by the 2013 flood. Emails with notice were provided to individuals who expressed interest in the project at the March Project Open House, and notices were posted at public facilities. There's a comment period. A comment, a public comment period related to the proposed action will remain open for 30 days following the publication of this notice, April 10, 2015. In addition to this initial comment period, a final opportunity for public view and comment will be provided when the draft EA becomes available. Interested parties may submit comments or request additional project information by contacting Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager, 7 South Sunset Street, Longmont, Colorado, 80501. Her email, kim.sugar@longmontcolorado.gov, and a phone number, 303-651-8304. There's a fax number, 303-651-8352. Or Richard Myers, Deputy Regional Environmental Officer, FEMA Region Number 8, DCF Building, 710 PO Box 25267, Denver, Colorado, 80225. Email, Richard, common spelling, dot Myers, M-Y-E-R-S, number 2, the number 2 after the S, at fema.dhs.gov, and a phone number of 303-235-4926. So as the project progresses, additional public comment opportunities will be made available through the NEPA permitting process.
Okay. I guess it's time now for the regular public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is Richard Judee.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. I come to speak on behalf of the arts and science organizations in town with respect to the reauthorization of SCFD, the Science and Cultural Facilities District, whose reauthorization will be voted on in November 2016. And you think that's a long time off, but in fact, it's not. The package is being put together that will go to the legislature, that the legislature will approve to put onto that ballot, and such items as the proportional allocations for how much goes to Tier 3, Tier 2, Tier 1 is a matter of considerable activity at the moment. Let me say, I am a huge fan of SCFD. I sat on the Boulder County Cultural Council for several years. I saw the organizations get this money, I saw what they did with it, and it is a super program, and it must be reauthorized. It is one of the treasures of this seven-county area. Now, that said, Longmont has only Tier 3 organizations, and in the, I have distributed to you an opinion piece that the Times Call published this morning, and those Longmont organizations are named there. The, my disquietude here is that Longmont gets back about $1.06 of the SCFD money that we sent out. In a piece that Richard Mail published, it's pages 2 and 3 of the handout, that Richard Mail published in the Denver Post back in November, he points out that there is a rebalancing of the distribution that ought to be made. The, this originally came up in 1988 when the SCFD was organized, and in the interim, the activities have shifted off into the peripheral areas around Denver itself, and about a third of all the activities, in terms of audience count, occur within the Tier 3 organizations, that's about a third, but right now, Tier 3 organizations themselves get about 13.5% of the total budget. But I would solicit as an action here, as our elected representatives, that you go to our other elected representatives, talk to your commissioners, talk to Matt Jones, talk to Foot and Singer, your representatives, and say, we need to get this rebalanced, that the Tier 3 organizations, SCFD-wide, deserve a larger proportion, because push is going to have to come from the legislature rather than having the SCFD itself put that together. So go get them, guys.
Thank you. Charles Dugan?
Good evening. The issue that I'm here to discuss is ERT smart meters.
Could you say your address, please, first?
Oh, excuse me. Charles Dugan, 1963 Mount Sniffler.
Thank you.
Medical research has documented the ERT smart meter is causing cancer and various other symptoms and disease. The ERT smart meter is transmitting high-frequency radiation through the electrical lines to all areas of the home or business. The ERT smart meter emits an amplified pulse of electricity every few seconds of high-frequency radiation in every part of the home or business. Essentially, this turns every room in the house into a microwave emitter. Microwaves hit the body with higher and higher doses of radiofrequency radiation, especially at night while the occupant is sleeping. This ERT smart meter bombards the human body with amplified high-frequency radiation. Radiofrequency radiation is classified by the WHO as a type 2B carcinogen known to cause cancer. The more exposure, the more harmful it will be to the DNA of the occupant. Recent research studies have proven that radiofrequency radiation causes mutation to cellular growth of all biological life. Children are the most susceptible to this radiation, leading to all kinds of childhood development issues and more health issues as they reach adulthood. The initial symptoms include insomnia, stress, depression, headaches, fatigue, muscle pain, joint pain, skin irritation, hypertension, seizures, and memory loss. The long-term effects include cancer, neurological degeneration, nervous system dysfunction, immune system dysfunction, cognitive effects, protein and peptide damage, kidney damage, and several other degenerative diseases. I advise this council to rule by the end of this session on an opt-out program of these ERT smart meters. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Gregerson?
Joan Gregerson, 1011 Hoover. Good evening. First, I just wanted to thank you. Thank you for working for us. Yeah, it must be kind of a crappy job sometimes. You're not doing it for the big money. So anyhow, we really appreciate you laboring through these meetings and keeping an open mind, and are you sure you don't want to, like, stand up and stretch or something? I just feel bad for you, sitting there. Okay, all right, well, feel free if you want, while I'm talking. I wanted to just kind of quickly report back to you a little bit about the Youth of the Earth Festival. So this is the event that's happening on Earth Day at the Boulder County Fairgrounds on April 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and you have a flyer there that is drawn by one of our youth council members. And we're really excited about this. We have 31 youth booths and 31 environmental educators that will be there. And as far as we know, it's the biggest event in Longmont or Boulder. So could I say that again? That Longmont has the biggest birthday event out of Longmont or Boulder. And I just wanted to kind of quickly run down the list and thank you for the participation from Longmont. So we have the Longmont Library Children's Program that Amy Fontenot is going to be cruising on her book cycle, and we have a donation of two books in Spanish of El Dorado. We have the Longmont Library Teens, have a youth booth with repurposed book art. Longmont Natural Resources will have a booth, but in addition, they are loaning us the Big Inflatable Globe to have out there as a marketing help. The Longmont Planning and Development Department will be getting input from kids on the Envision Longmont project. Longmont Power and Communications will be there with booths, and they've also donated a pile of LED lights to be given as prizes. The Longmont Youth Council, in addition to doing a grant for our T-shirts, they are also going to be there participating. And lastly, hopefully, you will all be there. So I just wanted to say quickly something, so Youth of the Earth, so this is remembering that we are all of the earth. So I hope when you're hearing all this political stuff, that you remember that we are water and soil and air, and the kids are really leading, leading the way. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sheri Malloy?
Good evening, Sheri Malloy, 2113 Range View Lane. Thank you to all of you, and especially Councilman Bagley, for dialing back the ordinance about the appeal process for big development. Thanks too to Councilwoman Finley for today's Times Call editorial, for calling for honest community conversations about supporting people with mental illness. It's worth noting that people with serious mental illness are far more often the victims of violent crime than perpetrators of it. But I'm here to talk about several philosophical and other concerns with the St. Braine Greenway Blueprint. First, I'd like to comment on the St. Braine Improvement Project, which is spot on in its primary goals. This includes goals like, I quote, "Increasing capacity to protect people and infrastructure from future floods, making environmentally responsible approaches a priority by improving natural habitat for wildlife, fish, and overall river health, by incorporating natural channel design techniques to improve the natural setting," end quote. These words are copied from the overall description. The improvement plan says, "Keep the Greenway green." Then there's the St. Braine Blueprint. The blueprint is largely in direct conflict with the St. Braine Improvement Project. The blueprint's goals are primarily economic, very heavily economic in focus and scope. It's my understanding that development is supposed to be approached as a three-legged stool, giving equal consideration to environmental and social impacts as well as economic impacts. In this blueprint, our Greenway's value is used as an enhancement to add value to private properties such as condos and restaurants. This blueprint is about 80% slanted toward economic development. That's a very unbalanced and unhealthy stool. While it's good that this latest version of the blueprint has restored the current 150-foot required setback, there are many other concerns. One is the removal of thousands of trees to improve river visibility for private businesses. Trees make up the understory and not only provide habitat for birds and wildlife, they provide shade, which is crucial to maintain the temperature and integrity of water ecology. Hot water brings unhealthy amounts of algae which kills fish and other aquatic life. I regularly walk along this corridor and have been having the distinct thrill of encountering a large female great-horned owl perched in trees close to the river. Last week, I spotted either a mink or maybe even a river otter. These are just a couple of the many truly magical encounters one gets as we visit and tune into this precious wild sanctuary. Making the green and Greenway primarily about money will come at a significant cost to river health, wildlife, and people. While I rarely see young families and especially people of color when I go hiking to the foothills and further up, I regularly see both along our Greenway. It's great to see kids enjoying wild and natural experiences they cannot get at backyards or neighborhood parks. This wild experience is right here, free for us all to regularly visit at no cost, minimal travel, and requires no ability to access and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Meriwether?
Hi, my name is Anita Meriwether, 4211 Raleigh Drive in Longmont. I moved here from Chicago in September of 2013, and I'm proud to be a Longmont resident. I'm picking up where Sheri left off. Another concern with the blueprint is the size and the height of the buildings, which are two to four stories tall with housing in mixed use. Buildings and parking lots means a lot of concrete, lots and lots of concrete. These are impervious surfaces that cause stormwater to runoff with oil, salt, gasoline, fertilizers, and other toxins from the sidewalks, the lawns, the buildings, and the parking lots. This pollution not only harms our river here, but it goes downstream too. Our Greenway is what we would call a wildlife movement corridor. Recent example is the bobcat with the two kits that was captured on camera out at the Sandstone Ranch. While the improvement plan encourages habitat and the continuity, the blueprint seems to cause habitat fragmentation. While some wildlife adapts to development, like the geese, the vast majority do not. In fact, they are forced to relocate and often die off. The 2015 Colorado College Conservation in the West poll results was just released, and I believe Sheri sent you an email and a link to those results in the survey. This is a bipartisan survey for assessed voter attitudes across six states, Arizona, Colorado, Montana, New Mexico, Utah, and Wyoming. Covered a range of issues and reasons why people choose to live in the mountain states. Notably, they were asked what their top factors were in living here, and the residents said access and recreation on public lands far outweighs the economic opportunities, quality of education, and even the quality of the healthcare. 96% of these respondents indicated that a very important priority for public land management is to protect the public land for future generations. Especially after the flood, Longmont residents want to restore the ecological integrity of this corridor. That means making the river and the surrounding lands healthy for plants, fish, and wildlife. To have the wild river and the surrounding land running through the middle of our beautiful town for all of us to enjoy and access is a very precious gift that deserves to be honored and protected. As you saw in the slides, there are lots of well-groomed landscaped areas in the blueprint, but my concern is that I do not see natural landscaping depicted. We've got a lot of parks and golf courses that are all well-groomed and manicured. We only have one St. Braine Greenway, and I say, let's fight to keep it green. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Peck?
Hello, I'm Joan Peck, 1935 Spruce Avenue, and I've been fortunate enough to live in Longmont for 37 years, and I'm picking off where Longmont for 37 years, and I'm picking up where Anita left off. There are also social concerns with this blueprint. Tonight and last week's open houses soliciting public input are very helpful, but where is the outreach to the affected neighborhoods? Before 2012, the city followed a robust public engagement protocol. Sandy Cedar was an expert in engaging citizen participation in proposed projects. We're wondering what happened to that helpful, respectful, and proven framework for citizen engagement. There are a handful of developers and landowners who are very invested and persuasive in influencing city council members and other community members to visualize and put in motion their development dreams for this corridor. It's deeply concerning that so few have had such a powerful voice in shaping this blueprint. These property owners will see substantial increases in their land value as publicly-funded flood mitigation plans take their properties out of the floodplain, allowing them to make even bigger windfalls by developing land that previously could not be developed. Because of this huge public investment, something like $90 million, how these properties might be developed needs to include serious expectations regarding minimizing environmental and social impacts. The Greenway belongs to all of us. Because of the huge public investment, all of us need to have equal voices in this plan. People like to walk and bike along the river to get away from development. We've all walked along developed river walks, perhaps in Pueblo and elsewhere, and saw lots of interesting buildings, eaten nice food, and seen lots of manicured grass, trees, bushes, and potted flowers. It's a nice urban experience. But what you don't see along any of those river walks are herons, coramonts, owls, golden and bald eagles, muskrats, foxes, coyotes, a variety of songbirds, wildflowers, and natural grasses. All of these are regularly seen along the St. Brain. With this blueprint, this rich wild experience is severely at risk. With this blueprint, the rich will get much richer at the expense of plants, wildlife, and kids and families. It's a win-lose. We realize there's likely going to be some development. Indeed, there are already some commercial properties in close proximity. But the public land portions of the Greenway should remain green, which means not developed. For the private property development, we need to rely on the tenants outlined in the improvement plan. To summarize key suggestions, first of all, use improvement plan to enhance river and habitat. Second, keep public lands along the Greenway undeveloped and wild. That's just the public lands. Due to massive public investment for flood mitigation benefiting private properties, incorporate serious expectations and guidelines for development using the tenants outlined in the improvement plan. Engage affected neighborhoods to address social impacts. The blueprint needs to respect and enhance our Greenway, not exploit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Rudy Bowman.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. The following are my comments for the St. Brain Blueprint. Eliminate the suggestion for taller buildings, two to four stories, and redevelopment areas. Taller buildings right next to the creek will block the view of the mountains and visual corridor at the Greenway for Greenway users. I can't imagine jogging or cycling on the Greenway below a four-story building with people in penthouses peering down at me. Having such a tall building there will ruin the Greenway experience of getting away from the hustle and bustle of urban life. I don't want our Greenway or the areas near it to end up looking like Boulder Junction at Pearl Street and 30th in the city of Boulder. When you drive through that stretch of road, you feel as if you're going through a canyon. Please don't place more emphasis or importance on the rights of penthouse occupants to live next to the Greenway over the people who are actually living in Longmont and are paying for the Greenway. Please save taxpayers some money by eliminating the event plaza at the Royal Mobile Home Park site. I have my doubts the plaza will remain intact in a major flood. The Kanamoto waiting pool and several city pedestrian bridges didn't hold up in the flood. A major flood will probably rip the plaza to pieces, especially since it juts out into the creek. And who will pay for the maintenance? Will council impose another increase to the parks and Greenway maintenance fee so that we are paying $6? Our community can't afford the plaza. The council should instead address the social needs of our community, like affordable housing, building a homeless shelter, and developing a mental health program. Another concern of mine is habitat fragmentation of the St. Brain Creek Wildlife Corridor. The increased noise and presence of humans will disturb wildlife and change wildlife movement through the corridor. To avoid the plaza, animals will be forced onto Boston Avenue, which is supposed to become a major road in Longmont, and they will end up being roadkill. And finally, I'm concerned about the blueprint's suggestion of building residential housing on an old landfill in the Boston Sunset redevelopment area. The Colorado Materials property is an old dump. Is it wise to have families living on top of an old landfill? I don't think so. I believe the state of Colorado has cleared this property for commercial use, not residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Leona Stacker.
Good evening, members of the Councilor and Mayor Coombs. It's a joy to be here this evening. I would like to commend the city for the St. Brain Blueprint. I've read it. I've been pleased of how many opportunities you've had for the citizens to observe and to look at it. It's always amazing to me how something that was so disastrous has given us a rare opportunity to do essential upgrades. This can also be the perfect opportunity to do some serious planning for turning the river corridor into an even more valuable asset to benefit all of our citizens. I appreciate all the comments that have been made. I think that there's great possibilities that you can really meet the needs and the desires of many people. Mixed-use urban infill development could serve, obviously, as an economic engine. It could be a place to attract and foster job growth, recreational opportunities, arts and cultural amenities. By carefully considering the environmental impact of any plan, our river can accommodate wildlife. It can be a wonderful sanctuary. I think the blueprint seems to have many options, which I really like. And of course, the property that now has been in the floodplain will certainly now be available for the creative ideas that I think many of the property owners are going to bring to you. Some of us have seen one already, and I think it looks wonderful. This is really a very exciting time. I look forward to seeing the creative ideas and the ways that you can include caring citizens who are anxious to share their input with you. I can say from experience, I really appreciate your faithful service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Jeff Thompson.
All I'm saying is, if this is on the up and up, why don't we just cut to the chase and do an environmental impact statement? What's the problem with that? What all I'm saying is, the only reason you do an environmental assessment is to determine whether the proposal, whatever it is, will have a significant effect on the environment. And if it does, unless FEMA can say on the basis of this applicant-prepared assessment that this project won't have any significant effect on the environment, then we have to do an environmental impact statement. So what they're setting us up to do is basically two environmental impact statements. And that makes a lot more money for CHM2 Hill than one environmental impact statement. What some of the speakers were talking about, the wooded areas along the creek, those wooded areas have to go. I spoke with the CHM2 person and confirmed this, that within this much wider, right now, we've got what they call a channel that's about like this, and the plan is simply to make it more like this. And all the trees that are growing along the creek have to go because they would slow down the water. They have to be, they are basically going to be in the channel, and they've got to be eliminated, and they can never come back. That's why they're talking, I saw the word irrigation. Right now, those aren't just single trees. Those are like woods, and it's all connected, and it's all wonderful, like you've been hearing. But what they're talking about is replacing that with just single trees here and there. Like Sherry said, it won't shade the water. That's a huge problem. And right now, you don't have to irrigate because they've got their roots down close to the channel, but now the roots are going to be way away from the water, and we've got to take our water, import more water from the west slope where we're destroying the river, to irrigate these trees, just one or two trees here and there where we've got all these wooded areas. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do this flood control project. All I'm saying is FEMA does not have to do an environmental assessment. If you were just move that the city council acknowledges that this project will have a significant effect on the environment, then we can cut to the chase and do just one environmental impact statement instead of two, and the only people that lose is CH2M Hill.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mike Schnatzmeyer, 12001 Twilight Street. Wow, a lot of complexity to this, and I appreciate all the comments from the previous speakers because I also care about nature and wildlife. And I appreciate Councilmember Santos's comments that people can care about the same thing and come at it from different perspectives. For me, it's about allowing the city to happen, the best, most flourishing, wonderful city of Longmont that could happen. For me, that's not a city that sprawls and creates more roads and more necessity for cars and road management. For me, that's a city that's walkable and bikeable. And for me, the river corridor represents the greatest opportunity in the history of Longmont to create such a city, to have a flourishing, vital city that's economically viable, where people don't have to own a car to live, where you can live along the river and you can get on your bike and bike to work and bike to downtown and bike to the mall and spend your money at all those places and make those places happen. I would love to see the river be a River Arts District. I'd like to expand beyond what the blueprint is saying and talk about in larger areas and think about it as an extension of the Arts District of downtown and have the river have connectivity to the mall by bicycle so that people can get on their bikes and go spend the money they saved on owning a car and spend it at the mall. I'd like, it has to do with affordable housing, and it has to do with providing housing for seniors so that instead of being ensconced in a senior housing project up, you know, up on a corner of the city somewhere, people, the seniors can live along the river corridor, and they can get out of their little senior housing project, and they can walk and enjoy nature along the river. You can't do that if you don't have that kind of density and smart growth that the river corridor allows and provides. I'd like to send the council members a little video snippet that talks about this fellow named Andreas Nwanyi, one of the founders of New Urbanism, helped develop the Prospect Community. There's a great video short, and I'll send it to council, and hopefully, we can get posted somewhere that addresses these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Striker Benson. Okay. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak and public invited to be heard at this point?
Anna Rivas, 4501 Nelson Road, and I don't have a statement, kind of just showed up. I just came back from a trip to Costa Rica, and my main reason for going there was to see the wildlife. You know, it was really wonderful just being able to step out, walk a little ways, and see wildlife. You never know what you're going to encounter. You know, I saw monkeys, I saw sloths, I saw an Iguana, Agudis, Kwatis, all kinds of birds. And then I come back here, and it makes me really sad to see how much we've eliminated. You know, I think back to what this place must have looked like long before it started getting all built up and all the wildlife that used to live here. It just must have been, you know, a thriving wildlife area. And it makes me really sad that now, living here, it takes so much effort to get out to a place where I can have a chance of seeing something. The St. Brain Creek and that bike path was one of my favorite places to go in Longmont before the flooding. Even if I encountered something, you know, it's not going to be like Costa Rica, it's not a tropical rainforest, but even if I just encountered, you know, some hawks or the prairie dogs or a snake, it was always a big thrill. And the thought of that being turned into another sterile park-like sidewalk where it's just, you know, planted trees and maybe a few geese or whatever else isn't frightened away by people so close by, just really makes me sad. We need more of, we need to preserve the little bit that we have left and not be in a rush to wipe it out and just sterilize the whole city. There's enough of that. As it is, I find myself having to go into the Boulder area and into the foothills to see anything. And having that one little piece here in Longmont, I think, is just something we should hold on to and treasure. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak and public invited to be heard? Come forward.
You have never seen my bald head before, right? Mayor Coombs, council members. Good to my friend, Sarah. Thank you for allowing me to be here again. This is my third time, I guess. City can do better. I don't look homeless, but I am, literally. Council members can do better. I have come a long way, and I made the best out of it to be alive even today. I have invested in my mind and physically, educationally, socially. And I have failed ups and downs, but I kept going. Please do something about this. I want to succeed. I want to contribute to society. I want to be somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak and public invited to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll close public invited to be heard. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Why don't we take a five-minute break? Okay, let's continue our meeting, please. Yeah, we've got a quorum. Councilmember Bagley.
Mayor, the first study session item tonight is an update on St. Rain Creek Improvement Project and St. Rain Blueprint. Dale Radamaker is presenting.
Mayor Combs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker. I'm the general manager for Public Works and Natural Resources and we appreciate the opportunity to...
Could we, uh, could we have some order, please? We're starting our meeting again, so everybody, please take your seats. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Combs and members of council, my name is Dale Radamaker, director, or general manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. Um, first of all, thank you tonight. Uh, we, we have a lot of information in front of you. Before I get into the presentation that we have on the, on the St. Rain Improvement Project and the Blueprint Project, I do want to offer to council that if you have any continuing questions with regards to the NEPA process, we have with us tonight Darren Lawrence, who is the biologist that's working for CH2M Hill, who is guiding us through that process. So if you have any burning questions that you want to have addressed, we can certainly do that, uh, if you wish. We need to do it now or we can do it towards the end of the presentation tonight. So I just wanted you to know that that resource is here if you have those questions, okay?
Thank you.
So I'm going to start off with, um, an introduction of this project and we have our whole team here tonight. Brad Scholes is going to talk a little bit later about the Blueprint Project. Um, uh, uh, and then Nick Wolfram is going to talk about the St. Rain Improvement Project along with Kim Sugar. Uh, these three individuals are, um, how do I put it? Probably the most qualified staff that, uh, can, can undertake this type of a project and do it in a very diligent, very determined, very professional and very thorough manner. And I think, uh, you know, the city's very fortunate that we have that caliber of, of staff, along with, by the way, an incredibly strong consulting team working with us on a project that suffice it to say is likely one of the largest, uh, public improvement projects that the city will ever undertake, probably impacting the largest area of the city that any one project has. And so, um, with that, what we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to talk about how these two efforts, um, link up with each other, if you will, and how they support each other and how one is not necessarily subserving it to the other, but rather that they are intended to be complementary of each other. Um, second, that it is our intent as staff to balance, and you're going to hear that word a lot tonight, we are balancing multiple objectives. First and foremost is community protection in the form of flood control. Um, council, you've been very clear on that since the September 13th flood and frankly, even before the September 13th flood, as has the community in supporting with their wallets at the elections, um, uh, for stormwater bond projects that we have been underway with now approaching 10 years. We're now undertaking one of the largest ones in the form of the St. Rain. But we're not just building it for flood protection, we're also taking into consideration the social impacts of doing this type of a project, the economic opportunities that might arise from it, and also, and very importantly, the environmental impacts on, on wildlife and on the natural ecology in general, whether it be water quality or it be, um, uh, the riparian area in general. Those are all issues that are going to be taken into consideration as, once the, the EA process, which is really kicking off, continues through 2015. And then, of course, what would it be if we didn't talk with you about funding issues? And so, um, we, we want to give you the latest update on where we are and there's actually some good news in there. So, um, uh, the funding gap continues to narrow, uh, which is what we have been hoping for and frankly telling you as we're, as we're moving through this. So, we're not there yet, but, um, as they say, Rome wasn't built in a day either, so we're, we're going to keep pressing this forward. Um, you know, you bring up these pictures. I don't know why this comes over here when I do this. Dang it. Um, no. All right. So, I have my grip. So, you, our, our, our community was devastated in this flood. We should never forget that. I won't. And, um, I told Harold today, it's, it is my job to do the best we can to protect future generations. All right. I'm sorry I'm doing this. I hate doing this. Um, I'm going to get off that. So, the city reach of the project, and I'm going to turn this over to Nick, we are going to protect the community first and foremost. That's our charge, that's what we're here to do, that's what I know we all want to do. We all want to do it in the smartest way we can and we also want to do it in the, in the most expedient way we can. We do not want to take the next 20 years to make sure that we can stand up and say we have done the right thing to protect our community. We want to restore our greenway. Everybody loves the greenway. I even come in from Weld County and ride on the greenway. Um, there's nobody on this team that isn't committed to doing that. We know how to be environmentally sensitive. We have a very good track record of doing that. We know how to build projects, we know how to do it in a way that gets the work done and, and does it in a way that protects the environment and in, in fact enhances the environment. Our goal should not be to just have it be as good as it was. Our goal should be to go beyond that and do better. We want to also rely on the planning efforts that this community has gone through over the last 20 years along the St. Rain. It's probably been the, the most studied area of the community for a lot of reasons, whether it be the Wildlife Management Plan, or it be the St. Rain, uh, Greenway Plan, or it be the First and Main Plan, numerous plans that have been done. Those should not just be thrown aside when we start a new effort. We should, we should learn from those, we should think back on those. What lessons did we learn from those plans and not forget it? So we're committed to doing that. We do want these two projects, as I said earlier, to complement each other. There's really no point in trying to build a, a river project that doesn't reflect the larger vision and larger purpose that you're trying to achieve as a community. We need to do both. We can't just, you know, as a good engineer, I could go out and build your river project and if we don't give deliberate thought to what the future, um, larger area can look like and the vision of that, um, then I think we're missing something. I think Brad's going to talk about that. And then finally, it's all public money and nobody likes to raise rates, nobody likes to, uh, ask for more money. Uh, we are doing everything we can to bring, bring in as many federal dollars to help us. Nick's going to talk about it a little bit. The latest thing is on the, the national competition that the mayor just signed a letter on today. Um, actually, Nick, I'm going to steal your thunder a little bit. Um, the good news, one big piece of good news is that the St. Rain, uh, project is going to be the, the, um, the identified threshold project for the state of Colorado under the, uh, national competition. That's a partnership between HUD and the Rockefeller Foundation. And I think that's great news for our community. It gives me great hope that we, together with the state of Colorado, will make the case on why, uh, we should be the recipient of the award, um, among others, by the way. I'm not singling out Longmont to be the only area, but for gosh sakes, um, uh, we certainly are a good candidate and our consultants from Hagerty, I don't know if they're still here or not, um, said we have a really good chance. And they're sort of experts, they've worked on the Sandy Project back in New York and so they sort of understand the, the ropes on that thing. So I'll leave it at that. Um, I apologize again for, for doing what I do and, um, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council, Nick Wolfram, Engineering Services Manager. Dale talked about the city reach, he talked about, uh, the, the hours that have gone in to, to, to planning efforts here in the city. And, and when we sat down and started talking about this project, actually John Clark was one of them that was sitting in the room with us and said, "Do you have any idea how many hundreds, thousands of hours of staff time and public involvement have already gone into these?" And, and John literally got on the city's website and started pulling out all these studies that we, that we did and we said, "Yeah, we have a St. Rain Greenway Master Plan that's already been done. We've got a Wildlife Management Plan. We've got the Rogers Grove Management Plan. We have this long, lengthy list of projects and, or mat, planning efforts that have gone in and have involved the, and community. So we're going to, we're starting with those." We gave this list to our consultants and said, "Go through these, this is our basis from where we're working." And so that is really one of the areas that we start. So we have two different reaches on this project. Dale talked about the city reach, um, that has some definitive goals. The other one's the Sandstone Reach.
So the goals for this reach are a little bit different. This is a more natural area, so we're going to focus on that aspect of it. So our goals are to restore the greenway, stabilize the creek, and what we mean by that is not necessarily making it confined to a small channel. The channel it was in previously didn't allow it to move, it didn't, so it wasn't allowing trees to propagate. And so this is an opportunity that we talked about, that we can make this area better by looking at maybe some of the alternatives of where this creek is right now. Are there things that we can do to improve where it's at now that would overall enhance this area? And though we're obviously going to be physically responsible, a lot of damage was done in this area, so to put it back would be quite challenging, but that is still one of the things we're looking at. Um, I think I'd like to mention that this area goes from County Line Road to the confluence of Boulder Creek. And once again, this is where Boulder County owns land, so they are a part of the planning process. So, um, one of the items, there's, as you've been hearing, there's a lot of concern of what this new river channel through town would look like. So even in our request for proposals to the consultants, we said, "We really want you to use natural channel design techniques." And what that is, is using techniques that result in the, a functional ecosystem, that the river can manage itself. So you have water transport, sediment transport, habitat and all the other ecological functions. So we'll be looking at that holistically. And so to accomplish that, you use a lot of natural materials, like you can use root wise to stabilize the banks that also create habitat for the fish. And as we heard, there, we do have a diverse fish population in this area, but we actually do have a problem in that we have really poor habitat even prior to the flood and it's been degraded further with the flood. So there isn't a lot of habitat for the fish. So there's only, the numbers are really small of these different species. So this actually gives us the opportunity to create a better ecosystem for people to enjoy and with the wildlife and vegetation.
Dale mentioned that we have a good track record and I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And, and when you think back to some of the projects we've done, um, up there on the top, um, with, uh, the state, with the Ken Pratt Boulevard Extension, we had, that project was in the flood plain and we had to remove that from the, from the Left Hand Creek Flood Plain. And we, at that point in time, came in and did the Left Hand Creek Project from Main Street down to the St. Rain Greenway, uh, to the St. Rain River. And if any of you had ever seen that before we did that project, that was a creek that had been narrowed by agriculture down to almost really what looked more like a irrigation ditch in my mind in a lot of regards than a creek. And we came in and widened that channel out. You still maintain a low-flow channel so that you're, you're, you're allowing that to occur. We did those plantings in there and then we took that and it, estably, it did the same thing. It controlled that flood plain, uh, channeled that flood plain, the area that the rec center is now built in was, uh, possible because of this project, along with some of the housing south of there, the State Highway 119 project and the Harvest Junction project. That was all in that Dry Creek Flood Plain, or Left Hand Flood Plain. So this was one of the things that was, and it became a great component of our greenway system that, that people enjoy. Down below that, Lycan's Gulch, uh, from Airport Road to Golden Ponds, uh, we just finished that a year or so ago. And, um, once again, an agricultural area where we reestablished that channel component through there. And you can see during, uh, in the lower right, during the, during the St. Rain Flood, while this is really designed around a separate drainage basin, during the St. Rain Flood, those flows that got out south side of the creek were captured by Lycan's Gulch and pulled back into the St. Brain, otherwise you'd had a lot more flooding downstream of that. So, we've done this sort of thing before. We can learn and expand even on what we've done there and we can make this, as Dale said. done there. And I think we can make this, as Dale said, an improved area. Um, this slide is looking at the light blue is the extent of the 2013 flood. Uh, the dark blue is the St. Verane Channel. Um, and what we're, and, and what we're looking at is the existing hundred-year flows, the existing regulatory hundred-year flows on the St. Verane Creek from FEMA are 10,000 cubic feet per second. Right now, um, FEMA and the, the state of Colorado are working on an updated hydrology study of the St. Verane Creek. They're doing several basins. They've done, uh, they did Left Hand. They did uh, St. Verane. They did um, Big Thompson, Little Thompson, uh, Boulder Creek. Thank you. Um, and I apologize. This is Kyle Hamilton, Project Manager with CH2M Hill, uh, who is, is with us this evening. Um, but they, they did those. And the St. Verane Creek project is not complete yet. The St. Green Creek analysis isn't, but the preliminary numbers they've given us are that the hundred-year storm flows that they're going to be recommending are not in that 10,000 range. They're in the vicinity of 13,200 on the eastern part of town, up to 15,000 in the uh, on Main Street. And they get higher even farther on out. Uh, so that's a significant change in that floodplain. Um, this study will be completed. FEMA will ultimately look at this. And we would anticipate that FEMA will then utilize these new numbers to generate the new floodplain mapping. So that floodplain that we've currently got with the 10,000 CFS, hundred-year storm flow could further increase. And so to me, that just further makes this project that much more important for the community. I will say that we are currently using these numbers that we've gotten in our design. We were underway with the design of the uh, Main Street River Bridge, uh, and had to come in and say, the design numbers are changing. And that is one of those things that's increased the length of that bridge and will have some impacts on our costs.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Nick, just a, a favor if you please. Um, you gave us that example of what the before and after was as far as the mapping of the um, the project that was um, done in the South Lawn Park area. When you're looking at this, will you make sure that we understand what the impacts were, where the hundred-year floodplain was? And with this increased flow, where would it extend to? Because it'll be a larger geographic area, wouldn't you say?
And we're actually still in the process of mapping, running that new model. We've just getting surveying data done. Uh, you may remember that several years ago, I, you know, council started looking at this before the flood. We were at, what, 2008 or 2009 council retreat talking about this. And at that point in time, we'd done the Anderson Study. And we, at that point in time, said, even using the 10,000 CFS number, the floodplain was larger than the existing regulatory floodplain. The existing regulatory floodplain is, is incorrect, uh, because it assumes that that water travels under Main Street and doesn't overtop Main Street. So a lot of this area up here is not in the existing regulatory floodplain because it's wrong. Um, but what you're getting at is in those is this light blue, the extent of the flood is pretty close to what we would anticipate what the, the hundred-year floodplain would, would be like. And the dark blue, if we build an increased channel to carry those flows, is roughly the idea of what that floodplain would be after the post-project. So you're looking at that light blue that you can see there is area that would, could theoretically no longer be in the floodplain, be removed from the floodplain. So it's a significant impact on the core of the community.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. But Nick, that also includes it, the work that's being done, that has been done by Boulder County on Pella Ponds and the other, the other ponds to the west of the city are, are complete and will hold as well, correct?
Correct. And, and part of that is, you know, you have to go all the way upstream. We heard discussions about uh, the St. Verane Mobile Home Park. St. Verane Mobile Home Park wasn't flooded during the flood by flows from the river that came up. It was the split flows that came around because they, they were already overtopped and were coming from this direction back. It was the flows trying to get back to the river. So that's the critical nature and why Dale, Dale looked at that city reach that goes from Left Hand Creek all the way out to Lycan's Gulch. And we're looking even beyond that. That's why we're doing that is one complete design to make sure that that fits together. And to make those changes in the floodplain, you have to go all the way out past Hover Street. And possibly we need to look at what has to happen out at Airport Road to make those all fit together. But you're correct, Heron Channel, the Heron Lake Channel, which council, that's another piece of that protecting the western boundary. So, and we've talked about that also this evening. The channel would obviously need to be widened to do this. And this is one simple cross-section. And, and we've got a, a lot of diverse sections along through there. If we, if we go back to this slide, think about what it's like out here at Martin Street where it's already pretty wide. Think about the Rogers Grove. Also then think about um, down between Boston and the Railroad Bridge. So there's a lot of different channels. This is a simplistic conceptual look at this where we do have an existing channel. The one thing I'll say about this graphic is it's, you know, it's showing this, one of the critical things of this and particularly down here too. And it's, this is somewhat deceptive because this is conceptual. One of the major components of doing this is making sure we maintain a low-flow channel. We're designing a channel here around 14,000 to 15,000 CFS, but we all know that most of the time, the St. Verane Creek, St. Verane Creek's carrying during the summer 50 or 100 CFS. So you're maintaining that low-flow channel that Kim talked about for fisheries, habitat, for those sorts of things so that, so that that functions well. So you've got that area then widened out. But the point is that it would require coming in here and doing a, a large amount of dirt work to open those areas up. That would require removing vegetation that exists there. Um, we might look at areas where we use some vertical components. We did that on Left Hand Creek, um, in that area to minimize getting into more property than we want to. Um, and then we would be redoing plantings. One of the things that Kim's working with her group and our team on is going down and doing a tree inventory of the St. Verane. And there are a lot of trees that have already been damaged, that have been undercut, that are going to need to be removed because they're dying. Um, that we also have a lot of invasive species that are not the, the, the trees that we have there. So this is going to be one of those opportunities that we're going to have to look at. But we will say that yes, and, and this is not intended at all to be a sterile channel. It is intended to be a natural channel. But we will look at maintaining a flow area and where we do our plantings to allow that to occur and to balance that with maintaining stream flows and flood flows within that channel area. We've talked recently, we talked last week to you, so I'm not, I'm going to go through these real quick. We talked about the, the uh, Main Street Project, several bridge projects that are ongoing. Main Street Project, we talked to you about last week. It's going to start in August and continue on uh, through July uh, of next year. The Sunset Street Bridge Project, we are working furiously on. We're getting our right-of-way plans approved by CDOT right now so that we can go out and get some, a couple of pieces of additional easement and right-of-way that we need to get for that. Uh, we have to go through CDOT once again on Sunset Street because that's coming federally funded money from the Federal Highway Administration in Boulder County. Uh, that project's scheduled to start this summer, uh, midsummer and continue on through this time next year. After we get those projects done, we're then going to work on South Prep Parkway. I will say that you're probably going to see some work maybe even next week on South Prep Parkway. Um, we're having to go out and you saw us do this earlier on, in the year, CDOT did it on Main Street. Because the grade of the river has changed since the flood, we're going to be going in and doing some riprap around those abutments to make sure we're protecting that bridge so that it will stay open until we're ready to start uh, doing that. So this is some uh, uh, not high, it's, it's only about $10,000 worth of riprap work, but it's some maintenance work that we're doing to protect it until we get to that point. It's safe now and it will be, but this is just going to protect those abutments. Uh, other bridges with limited flood capacity, we mentioned Airport Road, Hover Street, Boston Avenue, BNSF Railroad. Uh, we're meeting with BNSF Railroad staff next week, I believe. We've met with them once already to talk to them about that bridge. That's a major bottleneck on the river. That is a private facility. So we're going to have to work through them to talk about moving that. Uh, St. Verane Creek Improvement Project Schedule, Preliminary Design is ongoing right now. We're just getting started on that. We've been doing surveying. CH2M Hill's doing data collection. Uh, as we talked about with the EA, we don't have these solutions done yet. That's the purpose of that. Uh, we're, but we'll be working through now through uh, midsummer, through June on the preliminary design. The, we've talked a lot about the NEPA Environmental Permitting Process. Uh, public input on the preliminary design, when we get that laid out and have some alternatives, we'll be having that input opportunity in the summer of, this summer. Uh, then we'll be moving into final design on an initial phase. Uh, the initial phase of the project will include St. Verane Creek, uh, or the Sandstone Reach, and a first phase of the city reach that would most likely be between Left Hand Creek and Main Street tied in with the bridge. Uh, that would probably be the first phase. We would hope to get to construction on the first phase in 2016. Overall, construction could take five to seven, 10 years depending on where funding comes in. It is a large construction project, not something we would want to be having torn up all at the same time. Um, estimated needs for the St. Verane Creek Improvement Project, roughly $100 million when we look at the whole thing, including both Sandstone Ranch Reach, which we're estimating at about $10 million, and the city reach, um, at about $90 million. St. Verane Blueprint has talked about some additional things that, uh, enhancements that could be done. I think they've talked about roughly in, in the area of about $10 million on a very conceptual level. That is currently unfunded. When we take a further look at our funding, um, right now, estimated uh, project costs, uh, engineering, land acquisition, project management, construction uh, on the city reach. Now this is talking about the city reach only, about $90 million. We have local funding, City Alongmont Local Funding. That consists of $21 million that we received from the voters with the Storm Drainage Bond election. It also includes um, some matching funds from a variety of different funds that are going to be matching some of the FEMA funds. Uh, it includes street fund revenues for both this existing uh, street fund period that ends in 2016 and the voter-approved extension for replacement of the bridges. So that totals up at about $33.5 million. Um, FEMA Flood Recovery, uh, including the PAT project that Kim talked about, is about $19.5 million. Uh, Federal Highway Administration, Sunset Street Bridge Flood Recovery, about $2.5 million. Um, CDBGR D, CDBGDR, anticipated funding is at about 7.3 million. So we're at, and Dale can address more of that if you have questions on that, about 62.8, which is 27.2 at an unmet need. Uh, as Dale mentioned, and thank you, Mayor, for signing the letter that went off. Um, the state has included us in the National Disaster Resilience Competition Process. Uh, and so we're very excited about that. In addition, we're speaking to the Army Corps of Engineers. We've talked to them about trying to work on a reach of this. We're in the neighborhood of about $10 million. Uh, um, we're looking at other FEMA alternatives, just like we received for, we were already received $3 million from FEMA before the flood for the Main Street Bridge and the South Prep Parkway Bridge. We received $3 million from FEMA for that Left Hand Creek project that was done before the flood. So we've worked with them closely. They respect Longmont for what we've done. And we're going to continue to look for them. So we're looking at about all different locations that we can for additional funding. And we'll continue to do that. And that is what we have to talk about, St. Verane Creek Project. Uh, next steps, we did mention, uh, the open house and NEPA Public Hearing was tonight. Uh, public invi, uh, in, input on preliminary design alternatives this summer. Uh, we continue to go out and meet with uh, other groups that are interested in, in, in talking about the project, uh, and are also meeting with some of the more impacted property owners as we begin to look at needed right-of-way acquisition along through there. So if there are questions, uh, Kim and I'd be glad to answer those on St. Verane Creek Project. Otherwise Brad is going to talk about the um, uh, St. Verane Blueprint.
Just a clarification, when you are trying to increase the flow, you always start downstream and then work towards the upstream. Is that correct?
Exactly. And, and that gets back into a very, very good point, Mayor Coombs. You know, our first phase that we're anticipating would be that area from where Left Hand Creek comes in, uh, down below Martin Street, up to Main Street. Um, and, and there are certain reaches that you have to get to before you can start to make substantial improvements to the floodplain. For example, if we did that section of the project and the section even up to um, South Prep Parkway, we wouldn't have a lot of change yet because these split flows are occurring because of the railroad tracks here. So one of the points that we really need to get to is the BNSF Railroad and get that bridge widened so that that's not pushing those flows up and around that way.
The, the BNSF Railroad Bridge was actually a good example of what happens if you start upstream. It basically bottlenecked at that point and then started backing up and started coming back around as it was trying to get back into the river. And so the analogy I use with a lot of folks is if you're taking this much water and you're funneling into a place where you can actually pull this much water through, what you're going to do is create a bigger flooding issue at that point. And that's why you start downstream and move upstream.
Well, one of our concerns is BNF, BNSF Railroad, because there's several projects in the county. Um, you know, Lewisville's got some where the engineering's been done, the contract's been awarded and, but they can't get BNSF Railroad to even commit to a time every day to build, you know, a simple pedestrian underpass. Uh, I mean, they're not very responsive. You know, they get around, they'll do, and what if they don't?
And it is challenging. They are a private company that is interested in their business. Uh, and, and um, we are meeting with staff level. I will also say that I've contacted the um, government liaison who is one of the more responsive people I've ever contacted. Uh, and she, her initial response was talk to these staff members. But I will say, and I, we've already talked about this with Harold, uh, that might be the sort of thing that eventually we're going to be, she fortunately is in Denver. A lot of the, this region includes Nebraska. I mean, it's a huge area, Wyoming, Colorado. So these guys cover a larger area. She's fortunately in Denver. And so we've talked about trying to set up a meeting with Dale and Harold and perhaps you and Mayor to, to meet with her to expound on the concerns that we have for this project. We're also working with, uh, meeting, actually there's a meeting with RTD tomorrow. Cause RTD is looking at developing their transit station right in this area right here. Well, our, our initial study has indicated if those flows continue to come around here, they're going to have to construct a channel through the middle of their site to pass those flows back to the creek. And my response to them is, that doesn't make any sense. That's throwaway money. Instead, work with us on this bridge and keep the water there so it doesn't get onto your site to begin with. And so we're going to be continuing to work with RTD as a part of that, uh, and BNSF both on that.
So to talk about the BNSF piece, um, they also have another government liaison officer where one day I was walking in from another meeting and he actually, on his own stopped by to introduce himself. And he was having a conversation with Sean. And that turned into about a 30-minute conversation about this issue and what we need to do. And I think what, what separates this a little bit, and frankly, I think it's the, the points that we're going to try to make when we talk to them is A, they had a tremendous amount of track that they damaged because of what occurred at this area. But B, it's also in the middle of, of our community. So it's a little bit different when you look at things like pedestrian underpasses and, and some of the other issues. I mean, this is something that, that has a significant impact on our community. And I think that's the point we're going to make. At the end of the day, we know that it may be a struggle. Um, but what I do think is good is that they're actually coming by and having conversations with us. Um, and that's not something that we've seen before. And so I, progress. And, and again, Rome wasn't built in a day, but I, I think we're, we're having good conversations with them, which if you asked me a year ago, were we having good conversations? I think I would say no. But I think today it's changed.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Penelope?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is the uh, person you're dealing with at BNSF Kathy Norris?
Yes.
Okay, I know.
Kathy, you know her? Great. She's, like I said, Kathy is...
She should be...
I've never, I've never gotten anybody at BNSF to call me back the same day I left I've never gotten anybody at BNSF to call me back the same day I left the SEC form except for Kathy.
I have her number right here.
Then, good contact. Kathy has been very helpful. She pointed us towards and contacted some other BNSF people who then called us back, said, "Why aren't you talking to us? Why aren't you talking to Kathy?" And my response was, "'Cause you didn't respond to my emails." And she got them very quickly moving. So that's good to know.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, Nick, could you go back to the slide with the channel, the cross-section of the channel, please?
Yes.
I guess, what does the channel actually look like right now, the existing one on the top?
It looks, it looks a lot different in a lot of areas.
Right.
This is probably more stereotypical of the reach between Boston and the railroad, or between even Sunset and the railroad, where you have, that's some of the most confined area.
And the bank goes kind of high on one side.
Pretty vertical on each side and comes down and is a very narrow channel. And so from that standpoint, Brad's going to talk more about that, you know, not only is the water-carrying capacity limited, but our wildlife area is very limited. And by expanding that, we have opportunities to meet multiple needs and benefits.
However, I'm looking at the depth of the water. It looks like it's deeper.
And that's, no, that's...
So it's not, this is not accurate.
No, no, not to scale, NTS we put on there. Like I said, the key there is that you will have a low-flow channel. These are graphics to kind of show conceptual level. The point is, is that you will have a low-flow channel in there, in the middle. This is probably a lot wider a low-flow channel than it would be. But a low-flow channel carries it, and then an expanded area for flood flows. Because, once again, St. Verane Creek during the summer, 50 to 100 CFS, a high spring runoff, Dale, 13, 1500 CFS. Those are the numbers that we're seeing day-to-day versus the 15,000 numbers that we're having to plan with to contain that floodplain.
So when you're doing the channel reconstruction, I remember seeing we have almost little sandbars in the middle right now of that area you mentioned. So would that include removal of that silting-up kind of sandbar where there are volunteer trees and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a lot of debris that was dropped from the flood, as well as a lot of the change to the river. I mean, the river bottom has changed and dropped in some areas three to four feet already.
Okay. And, you know, and I guess the one thing that would also be helpful, we did, I recall, we did hear a lot from neighbors on that other FEMA project that we did prior to the flood about removing all of the trees along Pike Road. So, you know, if you can keep a running of, you know, this is what we had to remove and how well it served that project from being, to be successful, I think we need to understand, you know, that a volunteer tree is not always the best-located tree. I mean, of course, for the tree's sake, it's the place that is most suited to survive, but it may not be the best, you know, location long-term. However, I want to make sure that if we're going to do replanting, that we don't plant trees that aren't going to survive and keep replanting, because the reason those volunteer trees come up is that's the ideal condition for them to survive.
And we talked about that. That's interesting, because we had that very, Kim and I had that conversation with the project team just the other day, talking about education and explaining why, and that a lot of these trees are already damaged and that. But the other thing that we'll look at is where we do have to remove, and we will, just as we did down in, on Left Hand Creek, where we do have to remove some of those larger established trees, we will look at replacing those and replanting those in accordance with our policy. We might choose better places to add to our urban forest than right along the creek. We will be looking particularly in areas up and downstream of the bridges where we'll be pretty, probably more particular about where we're doing plantings because of the impact that those have, but we'll look at all of that. Good points.
I think another example is if you, if you remember back to the St. Verane prior to the flood, there were areas that looked like the top diagram. After the flood, it actually looked like the bottom because what naturally occurred during that event is it just blew out the area. And so to a certain extent, you have to look at what's happened during these events to understand what you need to do to accommodate those flows. One of the best examples was actually in the Isaac Walton area where it really just completely opened up that entire area based on those floods. And I wanted to make that point because you also have to learn from the event and learn from what nature's going to do in this situation. Water will go where it wants to go. It's the strongest force in nature. And so I wanted to add that to the conversation.
If there's no other questions, I'll hand this off to Brad.
All right.
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, I'm Brad Skoll, and I'm here to talk to you about the St. Verane Blueprint this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present these two projects to you. We value the, value the option to get public information out here and educate on these two projects. I'd like to introduce the team that's been working on the St. Verane Blueprint with us. Melissa Berry and Paul Kuhn are here from MIG, and their claim to fame is that Melissa is a Longmont resident and is invested in this project. And I think Paul is extra cool because he did the alleyscape design near downtown, and I think that was a good example of what we can expect to see in terms of the quality of landscape architecture. Also with us this evening is Adam Orans from BBC Research, and Adam conducted the economic analysis in conjunction with the St. Verane Blueprint. And if you'd like information, which I'm probably not going to cover in our presentation, Adam will be able to give you some nuts and bolts about, about what we expect in terms of economic return. So we've got some goals for the St. Verane Blueprint that aren't terribly different than what had been discussed with the St. Verane Creek Improvement Project. We're interested in reducing property and life safety hazards and doing so in a resilient manner. The common theme that we continually hear is how can we get the Greenway back? And that's item two. And then lastly, if we're going to spend this much money on rechanalizing this major capital improvement project, what can we do to make it nice? Okay, so, the planning area for the St. Verane Blueprint is roughly the railroad tracks and about Second Avenue on the north side, Hoover on the west, Martin on the east, and Nelson Road to the south. In addition to the consultation of the numerous planning studies that Nick and Dale talked about, we've had a very robust community engagement process, and we continue to get, I think, good turnout tonight is an example of that. We've had a stakeholder interviews. This started, by the way, in the summer of 2012 with our first community engagement efforts. And we have been going consistently through since then with Intercept Events at Rhythm on the River and the Festival on Main, Design Workshop, of which several councilmembers attended. We've had several open houses, and we have an ongoing group of property owner meetings. Some of the highlights of the plan, as we've already talked about in the St. Verane Creek Improvement Project, is looking at how to, when we reconstruct the Greenway, how is it going to be aesthetically pleasing to the Greenway patrons. It features nodes of recreation. We've looked at trail connections to the existing trail system and to key areas in the city. Architectural recommendations with respect to the bridges are going to be shown this evening. We're hoping that the Greenway is going to be an anchor to the downtown, and it's going to also help evolving adjacent areas. And one of the other highlights of the plan that we'll talk about this evening is to evaluate the existing code requirement for a wildlife setback. Here are a couple of focus areas that the St. Verane Blueprint has taken a look at. Starting on the left, Rogers Grove is a natural area that we expect to remain largely as it is. The Isaac Walton area, we do have an illustration to show you what we think that's going to look like in a reconstructed fashion also. An area next to the sun dial for the St. Verane Greenway Plan label. And then Dickens Park is a project that's been in a fairly complicated and detailed planning process that's going to be reflected in the St. Verane Blueprint. Connectivity from the St. Verane Greenway is something that's been looked at. The large circle oval on your left is examining how the Greenway and Rogers Grove can connect potentially down to the Twin Peaks Village through the Boulder County property. Other circles are areas that we've located where key connections are appropriate to enhance pedestrian access and neighborhood access. Here's a rendering of what Main Street Bridge is going to look like. It's going to be pretty close to what we see. These design concepts feature some of the architectural and materials that we've seen on the Kenkrat Boulevard extension, but they feature some columns with sandstone and some architectural panels, and then the signature St. Verane Greenway logo. Here's a nighttime shot with lighting accents. One of the focus areas that I mentioned a moment ago is Isaac Walton, and it's something that Harold and Nick were talking about. And this is an area in which we've incorporated the public input that we've gotten throughout the process to take a look at what the channel section should look like in a reconstructed circumstance. So in this instance, as opposed to the very narrow, deep channel that you saw before, which is what previously existed, the Greenway path is actually pulled back away from the river, and you see natural vegetation planted on either side of the riverbanks. And we're looking very carefully, even in conjunction with the St. Verane Creek Improvement Project, looking at what type of plant materials and what type of habitat that's going to provide. In this particular instance, this shows an illustration of what the walled element on the south side might look like. Here's some before and after photos of the flood on the left, and then a concept illustration of what it might look like after it's been reconstructed. Here's another focus area, which is near the sun dial, and there was a picnic facility located at that bend in the river. And one of the early concepts proposed a beach area. So we've heard about citizens wanting to have water contact, and that's something that they valued. But after talking to our natural resources staff and hearing about concerns with respect to wildlife habitat fragmentation, our new image in this area shows more of a natural habitat area, and it pulled back from the river a little bit. Here's the plaza proposed near Main Street between Main and South Pratt Parkway, and that's an idea that could complement these First and Main Transit redevelopment area as well as providing an anchor to the downtown. Some land use concepts were examined within the study area. And in the area, sort of just above the S curve in the river, is an area in which we think continuation of employment and perhaps even some technology businesses. That's an existing industrial area. Some of the purple to the, to the south of the river near Sunset is anticipated to provide some housing opportunities. St. Verane Creek, St. Verane Mobile Home Park is in that area, and we expect that to continue in use. And then finally, the First and Main Redevelopment Area is reflected in the St. Verane Blueprint as well. We have some concept images to show you about what development could potentially look like if you had mixed-use buildings and if you had some plaza areas next to the river. One of the takeaways from this slide is to look at the channel area on the lower right-hand side of the slide, and note that natural vegetation is proposed in that area to complement what would be a wildlife area. And it also shows a walled element that would be on the center part of the slide. We are working with Art and Public Places to look at opportunities for public art in the Greenway Corridor. Here's another example of, on the Main Street Bridge, looking north to what has previously been the veterinary clinic and part of Essex Motors that the city acquired. One of the recommendations of both the First and Main Transit Plan and the St. Verane Blueprint is to look for the opportunity for key architectural buildings, particularly along Main Street. I believe this illustration also shows Councilman Bagley hauling butt down on Main Street in a Jeep. Here's a bird's-eye view, looking east on Boston. The area in the foreground, I'll use this mouse, is the existing Left Hand Property. They're not expanded as far as shown in this image. However, we've talked to them about what their expansion and development plans look like, and we believe this reflects what they see. This slide is meant to convey an example of what the urban form and the massing and the density could possibly be in this area. We're also showing the potential for an amphitheater or a gathering place on the Left Hand Property, and you know they have many events on their property, and they were interested in doing something like this. Here's an example that our consultant gave to us from a community in California near San Francisco that was a summer neighborhood and had gone through a kind of a redevelopment phase. And the reason I like this picture is because this shows how existing buildings have been adaptively reused, and I think this shows the development potential that's just as likely to occur as some of the concept images that we've shown you. Here's another concept image showing these buildings, and in this case, you can take a look and try and get a feel for the density and what some of the buildings would look like. Also, another thing to take away from this image would be the wildlife and the natural habitat area that's proposed in the area just above the stream. You saw this slide a little bit earlier in some of the discussion that Nick provided, and slide is here so we can start a discussion about the riparian setback. The riparian setback, as it currently stands, is a recommendation from the Wildlife Management Plan that was done in about 2005, I think. And the recommendation of the Wildlife Management Plan was that from the edge of the riparian habitat, riparian vegetation, which is approximately this location, a distance back of 150 feet, including that, to the degree that that occurs on private property, there would be no development and that area would be left open for the benefit of wildlife passage and presence in the corridor. I've got a few slides in a little bit that will show you that demonstrate how the existing wildlife setback lays on current property. The wildlife zone in this particular slide is shown as kind of the edge of the two riparian areas, and this upper dimension is meant to illustrate in the current channel conditions what the wildlife zone looks like. As Nick has talked about earlier and Dale mentioned also, we're looking at a much wider channel configuration through much of the urbanized section of the city. And if you can see that what would be the wildlife zone is going to be dramatically increased just through a function of the channelization project. Here are a series of slides that are going to provide an example of the wildlife setback. This blue color is what's considered the zone of riparian vegetation. The next overlay of blue is the 150-foot setback and what that looks like in this particular area from Airport to Hoover. The next section from Hoover to, not quite Pratt Parkway, but near the Burlington Bridge... The next section from Hoover to not quite Pratt Parkway but near the Burlington Bridge shows the existing wildlife, a rather riparian zone, and then what the effect of the 150-foot setback is. Since the implementation of the 150-foot rule, three variance exceptions have been granted, one to Harvest Junction, both north and south for the St. Brain Creek and Left-Hand Creek, one to Left-Hand Brewing, and one also to the property at 1116 Colorado Boulevard, which is where Stoner Automotive was at. Here's the urban section near South Pratt Parkway, Burlington Northern to Main, the riparian zone, and then the 150-foot setback for no development. Finally, the riparian zone in the Dickens Farm area, and then the riparian setback in areas on the west side of town, near Rogers Grove. And in this area, riparian setback doesn't really have much of an impact because there's a lot of public property and that can be maintained. Then one final panel, which is the center urbanized portion of the city from Boston to Main, the riparian zone, and the 150-foot setback. And the illustration here is to show how that setback overlays existing property and existing buildings. So council, in summary, there's a couple of things that we're asking direction for you on with respect to the continuation of the St. Brain Blueprint. One is whether or not this 150-foot wildlife setback that's identified in the blueprint, whether it should be reexamined. And the options are to leave it in place. Another option is to evaluate it throughout the entire corridor. Should it stay? Should it go? And another option, I think that's the staff favorite, is to take a look at reaches individually and understand that the wildlife setback is going to function different in individual reaches. And there's areas in which there's very tight encroachment to the river. And if the objective is to enhance wildlife activity, probably unless we're prepared to remove existing development, maybe we need to depend on the enhanced river bottom dimension to create the better wildlife benefit. So those are kind of three options. We think that the last one is to take a look at the reaches on a case-by-case basis and to examine it a little bit more carefully. And then finally, one of the other comments, I think we heard from some speakers, that we've incorporated as a result of public input, is whether or not the development density that's proposed in the areas adjacent to the St. Brain Greenway are appropriate or are they too intense. The St. Brain Blueprint does not recommend any kind of zoning change. The preservation of existing heights and the development rights and uses in the area are recommended to stay the same, with the exception of perhaps liberalizing the uses a little bit in this area to allow for residential opportunities where they probably don't now. So council members, if I can answer any questions? If you'd like to do that, or if you could give us some direction on these two points.
Well, just as a thought, when you already widen the river channel, I mean, the wildlife habitat, they don't, you know, look at our cross-section and say, well, geez, this is our riparian setback. It almost seems like in some areas, like on a case-by-case basis, it kind of makes sense to consider, you know, perhaps bringing that 150-foot setback when we're looking at that channel down there because you've already widened the river channel. I don't know. I think you just need to be, on a case-by-case basis is kind of what I think. Councilmember Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd agree. I think, I mean, I think a one-size-fits-all approach would be a mistake. I think that there are some that what would be a good idea to be close to the river, but I can imagine being further away. And so I think that a case-by-case basis, I don't know how we would do that, but you guys have more experience than I do, so I wouldn't suggest, but I'm sure there's ways to figure it out. So I'm with the mayor. Also, going back to some of the public comments, I just wanted to ask questions. I think, I don't, I'm under the, I'm assuming that we all are understanding that there will be an environmental impact, right? I mean, we're shifting the river corridor, we're widening it, we're talking about setbacks. So my question is, I mean, okay, so we admit that it's going to have an environmental impact. We still need to do what we're doing, right?
Yeah, Mayor Coombs and Mayor Protem Bagley, correct. It's virtually impossible to work in a very sensitive area without having some impacts. Our commitment, however, is to follow and use best practices as we're going through that and to minimize the disruption where we can while still achieving our objective of flood control.
Okay. I just wanted to echo, my understanding was that we were going to have a balanced approach. And I'm still saying that that's what it is. And so to be clear, my understanding is, I mean, we heard the three legs of a stool mentioned. That's my understanding, that we're kind of balancing the economic with the environmental and the community and social and kind of, yeah, so I mean, so if there's, just to be clear, I'm only one of seven, but my understanding is that we're not sacrificing any of them for the other and that it's a balanced approach. Is that what everybody else understands?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then also, the, going along with that, part of my concern is, I don't know if we've all walked it, but after the flood, I walked it, there's a lot of areas that they're not natural. You know, we've got junkyards, we've got, you know, cement blocks, we've got unincorporated county land that right now is anything but beautified natural habitat. I, for one, would like to see it all made beautiful. And of course, I can imagine places where it's an economic epicenter, and then I can see areas where there's not a store or building in sight. And my understanding also is that we don't get to dictate that, but we would widen the channel for safety, keep the balance in mind, and then the private owners, whether it be private, city, county, or public of some kind, open space, whatever, that just in the future would develop like we always do, correct?
That's a long statement, but yes.
Yes? Good, good.
Can I add just one clarification?
No, you may not. Yes, please don't.
So Darren reminded me as well, when it, I think we heard some of the previous speakers talk about the difference between an environmental assessment and environmental impact statement. You don't move from an environmental assessment to an EIS unless you are causing significant environmental impacts. We believe we can build this project without doing that.
Okay. Because it's true, not because you're trying to do the end run?
Because it's true.
Okay. Just double checking. And so, yeah, I'd encourage staff to do it on a case-by-case basis and to proceed forward with the project, keeping the public in mind and inviting participation all along the way.
So what I wanted to show you to answer your question, when you look at this area here, in this case, this is the area where the constriction really starts, when you look at what we own and what is owned by others on each side of it. And so you can see that they're pushing this out to this boundary line here. Hey, can you draw it? So you can see that they're pushing out here, but that's actually where, we don't own that property. But in this case, if you said this is left-hand, that's actually left-hand that owns that property. And so in certain areas, we are constricted based on ownership. And we know that there's certain areas where we're going to have to buy property. And what we're trying to evaluate is how do you use your dollars so you can actually manage flood control and you're not spending a lot of dollars on acquiring property where it diminishes what you can actually do from a protection standpoint and protect our community? And that's, again, part of the balance of this entire equation.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, first of all, I would have liked to have had this second presentation in our packet so we could have been better prepared to answer your questions on our 150-foot setback. I think asking us to make that decision tonight without having any more than three minutes to go over it is uncalled for. Now, moving on. Maintenance costs on the new Greenway widths, are we accounting for that and how we can manage that in the future?
I'll take that one. Councilmember Moore, we have to, and we have to do a better job than maybe historically has happened along the river. And so those costs are going to involve things like keeping control of the vegetation so that the voluntary trees that start coming up get dealt with when they're a one-inch caliber tree and not a six-inch caliber tree. You need to deal with it when it comes up. And so we are working right now, we believe that's a cost that will likely be borne primarily by the storm drainage utility, because this is a flood control area, but it will also likely have some impact onto the parks budget because you got the Greenway there. And so we're going to be likely drawing on both of those as we go forward over time. No different, by the way, than any other infrastructure in the city, whether it's a utility line or a road. You need to maintain these drainage ways as well. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about your frustration of not having more information on the 150-foot setback. Really, staff is not looking for you to make a decision tonight. It's really, we believe we will return to you with things like the guiding principles that we're going to follow as we go through a reach-by-reach analysis. We want the council to very much deliberately think about that and consider that. So our intent tonight is not for you to feel like you have to make that final decision and the 150-foot is going to change to some other number. That's really not what we're saying. What we're saying is we want some direction that we don't think it's a one-size-fits-all or that it should just go away. We think it is something that deserves deliberate attention at a higher level than what we've probably done historically up and down the river.
Okay. Do you think there's a minimum channel width? Because it looked like you were taking it from a, basically a slot to a channel, you know, with more area. Is there going to be some sort of minimum width that needs to be?
I don't know that we have an exact minimum width where I can tell you it's going to be 200 feet wide or 250 feet wide. What I will say is that the minimum widths, where they will likely occur from Boston Avenue down to Main Street in different stretches along there, especially near the railroad bridge as we come around that bend, that is where we have businesses and buildings very close into the river. And so that's an area where we will look to try to constrain down the land that we need so that we're not taking people's entire buildings and businesses and likely using that tiered cross-section that includes some walls, at least on one side of it. So, yeah, and the other one Harold is telling me is at the, I heard it in my ear, was at St. Brain Mobile Home Park. Again, we are trying not to displace people from their homes. And so if we can design a project in such a manner that's attractive and functional and works without telling somebody, you know, there's no room for you here, you need to move, that's what we're trying to do. I can't sit here today, though, we don't have even the preliminary design done, to be able to, with certainty, say that we won't have to displace somebody. But we are working hard to avoid that where we can.
Okay, then, I guess the other comment from Mayor Protem about a more surgical approach does kind of make sense because there's already existing development in a lot of these areas. We don't want to necessarily take away property like that. But we are hearing from the community that we want to make sure we maintain a wildlife corridor. And I think as long as we can satisfy that need, we can address this riparian setback as an additional setback or not. But based on that, I would support a surgical approach. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This has been such a robust and public process that we've been going through for years on this. It seems like I've seen parts of this presentation numerous times. And every time, I'm just amazed at how you've taken that input from the public and put it into the concepts. And I think that's great, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for it. You are not looking for a motion on this tonight, so I won't make that motion. But I do think that you have to look at it on a case-by-case basis because we certainly don't want to get into a position where we have to use eminent domain to take over people's property.
And if we can get the general consensus of the council that it's okay to move that way, you can do that either by us seeing a general sense or you can make a motion either way.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the general gist of where we'd like to go, is make it more of a surgical approach. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with Councilmember Moore. I was actually looking for something else in the packet that was the St. Brain Blueprint because last time we saw it was August, and apparently a lot of changes have happened, and it's like not the same thing as six months ago. So I really feel, I like to be prepared. I'm not, I was never a boy scout like Councilmember Bagley, but I do like to be prepared for council meetings and to be able to put together some thoughtful questions and also touch base with staff on things I don't understand. So I'm quite disappointed in the way you presented it to us. I do have concerns about having too much hardscape. When I look at those schematics of the development, while right now we have parking lots that are dirt parking lots, those will absorb water and hardscape parking lots will not. When you look at Boston Avenue, with that much housing, it almost like you'd have to turn Boston into four lakes. That's another drainage issue and, you know, rebuilding bridges. And again, you know, what we did with Harvest Junction, you know, the back door was on the river and too close. And we know it was too close because they had experienced significant damage. So I think the first principle that I'm glad staff is abiding by is that, you know, we have to look at hazard and safety and not do something stupid, frankly. But again, you know, we have to make sure that it really works for everybody. And it will, some of it, being in that wild part in the city is such a refuge. And I've always enjoyed that aspect, that there's this hustle and bustle that's going on, you know, out there. And when you're by the river, even in some of the industrial areas, you still get this idea of the natural corridor. As far as the, looking at the distance and the wildlife corridor, I really think that we have to take our clue from what type of wildlife moves through that area. And if, you know, you end up with too many pockets of impact, you're going to drive the wildlife away. And especially if you're looking at, you know, all of the schematics you're showing us, anytime somebody has a residential area like that, they're going to want it lit up like, you know, a regular street, even though it's adjacent to the river. And people do not want to have that low level of lighting because they see the river then as also a corridor for people that may come up into their neighborhood and a safety aspect. And so, you know, while wildlife could travel down that area, other, I mean, people could travel down that area too. And I know we've had issues with people camping along the river and making their homes on the river. And, you know, I think there's going to be an automatic response that we have to light this up all the time. And, you know, I think that would really destroy the ambience of it. So I'm in favor of looking at this case-by-case. The one thing that I'm hesitant about is, now that we're going through the comp plan, I think we need to hold this. And I know that there's a section of the comp plan work that's going to be holding this in the play to ask people about what they think. I don't think any of these conceptual drawings should be shown to people when we're having that conversation. And that's just my opinion. The one last thing is, I have a hard time judging what 150 feet looks like. So if there's some way that along the Greenway, you could mark even 50 feet so that we can extrapolate from, you know, but you know what? I didn't play football, I played field hockey. Okay? So, you know, I, so I'm just thinking that with, all of it is the way it feels, and you can't imagine that when you don't have buildings and other things around you. So I'm thinking just what 50 feet looks like. And again, we don't have a concept what the channel looks like yet, so this is also preliminary. But I don't want to make it- But I don't want to make any final decisions until we have an idea of how things are shaping up with the design.
And if I could, just real quickly, to sort of tag on to Councilmember Levison, your concern with the, particularly with the planning on the blueprint. I don't think tonight we're asking you to adopt the blueprint plan. We're going to talk to you about it yet again. I think we do want to come back with the changes that we are trying to make and reflect as we continue to go through this sort of iterative process with public. I think this also is intended to be considered as part of the comprehensive plan update. But to the extent that we need to get some sort of general guidance, we think we can continue to move forward on the reach-by-reach analysis. Again, first coming back to you is sort of what the guiding principles are going to be that we're going to be using, but that the blueprint plan itself can also come back in the form of a more detailed and actually have the plan in your packet. It's on the website now, but we can certainly have that, a link to it or more immediate detail to it, and maybe give it a little more time because I think, Councilmember Moore, you expressed a similar kind of angst about it, unless I read you wrong on that. But I think that can be done, and it's important to us that we keep everybody together, at least that they understand all the attributes in it. Likely not going to agree on every aspect of every part of it, but certainly that coming back with these changes that have been made since you've last seen it makes sense to us as well.
Councilmember Christianson.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so, we're supposed to be just sort of...
Feedback.
Feedback, so, okay, here's my feedback. Okay, so, I do think that the plan as a whole, we should keep the 150-foot setback because that works to the plan as a whole. And that's the general principle of keeping the corridor wild, keeping the corridor free for a more of a wild experience and more of a Greenway experience. But clearly, when we get into certain areas, we're going to have to make these surgical decisions on a case-by-case basis, and there are certain places that are grandfathered in. And, well, we really can't do anything about that except to engineer the river as best we can there. So, that's obviously what we're going to have to do. I also think there are places that are, they're grandfathered in now, but if they change hands, we should sort of keep that grandfathering in because that's, they still have the same feel, they're still going to be part of this corridor. I don't think it's fair to sort of grab stuff away and say, "Oh, well, now you changed and we're going to have to, you start from scratch." I mean, we're just going to have to make these case-by-case basis. So, the density, I, I think this is hard for all of us to imagine this. Because I live in Old Town, I don't want to see Sunset turned into a freeway because Boston now goes through, and I know we're going to have to make it denser. I don't want to see, I would like to keep it at three stories instead of four stories, five stories, six stories. It can be denser without going, I mean, it's going to have to vary, too. The closer to Main Street you get, the higher it can be and things like that. We really are going to have to, all of us, accept a lot of changes at certain areas. But in order to keep this as a wildlife, as a Greenway, we're going to have to concentrate this instead of spreading it out all along the Greenway and having housing on the Greenway. I would like to see it really clustered around Main Street because that's what we want to develop is north-south Main Street and just a little bit around east-west on the Greenway. As far as, I mean, that's my feeling. And there's another idea that I thought was quite good that several people talked to me about before, which is, when I'm walking along the Greenway, I'm going about two miles an hour. If I have a two-year-old child, I'm going about zero miles an hour. And then, there are bikes that are going 25, 30 miles an hour. That's not awfully compatible. And if there's a way in, to develop a separate bike path and a footpath as part of this, that's something to consider, I think. And it would make it more of a multimodal, a better experience for everybody, bicyclers too, because they can say, "On your right," but I don't hear well. I'm never going to hear that. And so, having people who are going very, very different speeds is really difficult, and especially if you have toddlers and dogs, and then you have bicyclers going 30 miles an hour. It's not, I'm exaggerating, 20 miles an hour, but that's, that makes it, as long as we're reconsidering what we're doing, let's think about that in certain of the more dense areas where you have a lot more bike traffic. It's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember St. Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, when we talk about the improvement project, and I've stated it several times, that to me, that's the most important thing that has to happen first. Anything else that's going to happen is going to happen afterwards, but protecting the city and the residents is the most important thing. I was here when the three boards met, Prab, TAB, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Transportation Advisory Board, and the Environmental Board met to get its first glimpse at this. And a lot of folks jumped to conclusions when they saw those pictures. They're pictures. So, I guess we can have some width, density, and some without density to make everybody happy. But in reality, if a property is going to, if some owner along that stretch wants to develop and they're within the rules and regulations of the City of Longmont, they're going to be able to develop. You know, whether it's more dense, less dense, I would, let's get through the project, let's get through the project first. The blueprint's a blueprint, you know, anybody that, I'm not a builder, but from what I understand, blueprints can be changed. Things can be added, things can be subtracted. To say that one thing is better than something else at this point is probably very premature. Whether you want housing, if somebody wants to build something, housing or a restaurant, you know, let's get through the infrastructure piece first, but you still have to plan for that eventual potential construct, development. I'm fine with the surgical approach of looking at it reach-by-reach. In some areas, the 150-foot setback is important, in some areas, as was mentioned, is not, potentially is not. But, you know, anyway, we have the information, this is very preliminary, and I, you know, the former city manager had said, the city, again, as has the Senate or the council member, had a very, had a very robust public input. And I corrected it and said, "We still have a very robust public input process." I would anticipate this, this is, along with the comp plan, is one of the biggest projects we've ever done. I would still anticipate that public process occurring. Not everyone's going to agree, people will stomp their feet, people will send emails that they don't like this or they don't like that. Again, we all want what's best for Longmont, we have different ways of getting there, let's try to figure out how to make this happen. But again, the most important piece is not to have a river walk or a beach. The most important piece of this is protecting the city. Again, for me, everything else is secondary, but we need a plan for it.
I guess we'll go on just, we're in council, we do have one more section to get through tonight, you know, not trying to micro-design this whole thing reach-by-reach tonight, so I hope we can get through this. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. One other thing that I would like, when we're talking about striking a balance, we talked about, and I don't see the Longmont Area Economic Council's involvement in saying how much of our business-like industrial or manufacturing-type land uses we would, you know, give up. And I think there's a great value, besides the intensity of what we want to have for the transit area, where you want people as close as they can to pick up, you know, buses, train, whatever. The other very important thing is to have large blocks of employment centers. And every time we do this balanced approach, where we're looking at residential with industrial, we had this conversation before, is, you know, once an apartment building goes in, no one's going to want an automotive garage or some other noisy industrial use to go in, and we're going to set up some inherent conflicts. However, I am very much concerned that we have good public transportation access to job centers. And I think that, you know, having the Greenway act as that last transportation mile that's off a street as a backdoor way to get to your employment is a great thing, and I would encourage that. It's just that we cannot keep giving up places where people will have jobs in that kind of standard manufacturing or corporate kind of setting.
So, I can say that I have began having, I have started having conversations with Jessica on this and getting the feedback on this piece because I agree, I think it is important when we look at that area. And so, we do want to get their feedback in terms of what they see and how they look at it. And I know she started to take a more in-depth look at this area and evaluating it versus some state programs that can, that exist. And so, those are conversations that we've had, and hopefully, in the near future, we'll be able to bring something back that really addresses your question on that issue.
Okay, I'm just wondering if we want to address the one-time funding issue tonight or put that back in?
It's a very large conversation.
Well...
We can end it by 11:00.
Okay, if we can end it by 11:00, okay.
Here, it looks like Jim Golden will present.
All right.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. A few other staff members will be joining me here in a couple minutes. And I'm going to make this a brief presentation so that you all can have some time to discuss this as necessary or give us some direction. So, as you may recall, back in October, we did have discussion about council one-time expenses, and at that time, for 2015, the council gave direction on how to handle those expenses for the 2015 budget. We had 11 programs or requests that were funded as one-time expenses for the 15, listed those in the council communication, a total of $248,426. After the council gave us the direction, there was some discussion about the matter, and then eventually, there was direction, again, further direction to bring these back for further discussion on the following two points. First is, which of these programs should be funded as ongoing or one-time or not at all in future budgets? And secondly, to discuss a process for the future to ascertain that the entities receiving the funding are doing what they indicated they would be doing with that funding. So, staff has gone back and we have discussed some opportunities on how to address that second question there, and we also did schedule this tonight to hopefully have you have the opportunity to give us some direction on the remaining eight programs, that whether they should be, continue to be funded or not. So, three that were funded for 2015, two of them were specifically for a one-time basis and were not expected to return again for 16, and that was the Tinker Mill and the Downtown Longmont Community Ventures. And then, the third was the Longmont Community Justice Partnership, which was significantly funded on an ongoing basis, so we assume that we should take that for, as the readiest direction, that we would continue to fund the full amount into future budgets on an ongoing basis. So, we would only need, we believe, direction on the remaining eight programs. Before we get into that, then, just wanted to talk first about performance measurement. We recommend that we standardize service contracts to include a logic model that links the service with the desired results of government, identifies the indicators of progress towards meeting those desired results, and how they measure progress, and the activities that city funding will support, and what specifically city dollars will fund. That's a contract prototype that's already being established and used with human service agency contracts that the city already undertakes, includes semi-annual reporting and submission of financial reports. For those agencies that have gross annual revenues of $200,000 or greater, a copy of their financial audit is requested. The state does not require a financial audit for nonprofit agencies with gross annual revenues less than $200,000, but we can request that they have an independent financial review. For future requests for funding, prefer to just avoid this topic, but I figure we should at least address it because it'll probably come up. So, when it does, we, for those that, it's directed that we continue these as ongoing funding in future budgets. For increased requests for funding, we propose that they, these groups inform their city staff liaison, staff would incorporate those requests into our budget prioritization process. We already do that with existing agency contracts that are funded in various departments lying on our budgets. Doesn't mean that there's an automatic increase in funding just if it's requested, instead it will depend on available resources and competing priorities. Future requests that are for a true one-time need, would need to be received by, by July of each year for it to be considered for any funding for one-time purposes in the next fiscal year. We would propose that staff evaluate those requests through the budget prioritization process against the other identified one-time needs and available one-time funding dollars. And we also recommend that requests that rank in quartile four not be eligible to receive one-time funding. And finally, we, so, we would take it through the budget prioritization process, and if it comes out in quartile four, we recommend that it not be considered for one-time funding. That's just...
Not this quartile four, but future ones.
That's correct. Right. Future requests, new requests for one-time funding. That's just a recommendation, if you don't like it, you could tell us, bring it back to us anyway, and we want to look at it. Finally, staff will continue to set aside a budget in the general fund contingency for unanticipated or emerging needs within the organization or community support opportunities that could have significant impact on the Longmont community. As with the previous budgets in recent years, the budget for this year included $60,000 for this purpose. We are not required to have a contingency, but the charter does allow for one to be considered in the general fund, and if one is maintained, the charter requires the council has to approve those expenditures or transfers from that contingency. What we would recommend, though, is a consideration that maybe the council have the city manager review and make recommendations to the council on any individual request for general fund contingency. So, those are our recommendations. We've got included in the communication, and Teresa's going to pull up a slide here that lists the eight different programs that we really do need discussion or direction on, on whether they should continue as an ongoing funding in 2016's budget. We have separated them here into quartiles as, we have scored these in the most recent prioritization process. I think there's at least one, if not more, of the groups represented here tonight.
Councilmember St. Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, Jim, you said that for restorative justice, you just...
You already gave us direction to fund as much as we could of that as ongoing in the 2015 budget, so I would take that to mean buying the rest of it for 2016.
And I get that. My problem with that is that we've been... And I, and I, and I get that. My problem with that is that we've been the, basically the sole provider. Boulder County has not, or the school district has not, uh, stepped up its funding. Um, are we just going to be the sole provider? I guess this is a question of members of council. Are we going to be the sole provider, uh, for this organization to continue? I, it's a great organization. It does wonderful work. But if we can't get the, our other partners to buy in and, and be an actual partner, then we have a problem. Um, because some of that money, um, a good portion of that money would help us with these, these other eight, if the council should choose to fund these other eight. But when a big chunk of it goes to one organization, um, and, and them not, um, and, and just, outside observation, not pressing the county or the school district for, um, for funds, it says a lot to me that there, what happens if we couldn't fund it? Um, just a thought.
And just to point out, we have been funding it at this level for the last six years. So...
Okay, so every single year we fund the holiday lights and the Fourth of July fireworks. Why are they on the one-time only budget? And we also fund every year the Longmont Council for the Arts and the Regional Air Quality Council. The Regional Air Quality Council is actually a member organization that we're part of, just like all the others. That should, this should be taken out of this and put into all the other agencies that we are members of.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'll answer the first part of your question in that. It, it, they were included as ongoing expenses in our budgets years ago. We ran into tough times.
Oh, okay.
Had to use one-time dollars to fund them. If you believe that they should go back in, so direct us.
Okay. But the, so the other things that we fund every year, like the Longmont Council for the Arts and the, the Fourth of July concert and the Fourth of July fireworks and the holiday lights, we fund them every year. Why are they, is it the same problem?
Yes, well, that response was in, in turn to pretty much all eight of them, I believe.
Likewise, the Sister Cities program, which we fund every year, it's the same problem? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, uh, just a friendly chat with Councilmember Santos rather than a debate. The, uh, my, uh, I think that the difference between us and, and, uh, Boulder County and the school district is that Longmont, jurisdictionally speaking, we're the ones responsible for most of the, I mean, we're the jurisdiction in which crimes occur that most of these folks wind up participating in restorative justice. Um, so we have a county court system, but usually when you're dealing with a s- more serious crime, you're either dealing with A, someone who's not a kid, or B, someone who's in district court because they're, they've committed something more serious. So I think that the restorative justice primarily deals with Longmont citizens of a fail, uh, who have hope of not, uh, reoffending. And so I don't, I don't have a problem with just continuing the way we decided to, to keep restorative justice in the ongoing funds. Um, and then also I think that, I mean, we could, we could sit here all night, but I'm willing to bet that at the end of the day, if we debated each and every one of these things, we'd have four people in each and every one of these things, they're going to vote that we should continue funding all of these things. I mean, Longmont Council for the Arts, I can name at least five or six of us that would vote for it. Longmont Symphony, Longmont Symphony, same thing. LDDA Holiday Lights, same thing. Fireheart Arts District, same thing. Fourth of July Fireworks Show, same thing. Regional Air Quality Council, same thing. Longmont Sister Cities, same thing. And then my only question is Vance Brand Civic Auditorium, I'll say same thing, but what's the $20,000 used for? We don't own it anymore.
It's, it's the Longmont Symphony and-
For the auditorium maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's Longmont Symphony for, uh, the Fourth of July concert, so that's paying for them to use the auditorium?
That's at the park.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the last, the LSO Vance Brand Civic Auditorium $20,000. Thank you, Karen. Get somebody up here who knows what they're doing. Thank you. Jim, have a seat.
Mayor and City Council, Karen Rooney with Community Services and Doug Ward's also in the back. So if the $20,000 is, uh, is to help defray the cost for the symphony to, um, rent the auditorium for their, for basically their year-round concerts and the $10,000 is to sponsor the free concert in the park for the Fourth of July?
I, uh, might be premature, but, uh, I actually move that we actually take all of these, put them into ongoing funding and with the stipulation that they come back in the event that they, that the organizations are asked to increase them.
I, I agree with that. Pretty much everything that we continue to do now that the economy's increased a little bit, let's just take it off our plate and put it into the, uh, ongoing funding instead of the one-time funding. Councilmember Levison?
Well, except, you know, there is some stuff when LDDA, I'm a huge supporter of downtown, when LDDA needed to buy new, new lights, we pay for the new lights. LDDA is going to have significant new revenue coming in. I think we could, you know, the holiday lights, I'm not sure if the $5,000 is for us to pay for them to put up the lights, but again, I know we've negotiated with doing maintenance of the parking lots as far as, you know, uh, the trash barrels and trash pickup. So could we just shift the holiday lights into, uh, not LDDA, but make it part of what the Parks Department does, you know, as far as putting up all the holiday lights that they do? Um, or just shift it back into the LDDA budget and say, you know, we've done this. I mean, it's $5,000. If their budget can't stand $5,000 to do something that's really eccentric to, that benefits their property owners, then, you know, I think that it's, uh, a small amount of money. But again, once it goes into the regular budget, unless somebody's going to pull things out by line item, and we all know how much we hate when people pull line items out to discuss, um, all of this is going to go on forever, whether or not there's really a need or an assessment of it every year. Um, you know, the other idea might be to, um, make a special, um, fund like we have for human services for arts stuff. Because say, for example, there's a new arts organization that comes forward and maybe whoever determines what quartile it is doesn't know enough about the concept because it might be new and up and coming, and it ends up in quartile four, that it will never get funded. So it'll just keep reinforcing what we have had as established. And then very little opportunity for new things to churn through the community. So that was my one concern about putting everything in ongoing, um, part of the budget. Um, but I do agree that we need to keep the, uh, Regional Air Quality Council, you know, it's a membership organization and I don't know why we didn't discuss that as a membership organization, like we pay dues to every other one and why we kept it, you know, in, in one time. Um, and then Jim, I guess for the future, if things get tough again, which things will we start pulling out of the budget to say one time? And we always have one-time money that's left over. So then the council will just decide to take the one-time money and not use it, except for, you know, some other thing like reserves or whatever.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So-
I'm all over it. I'm ready.
Jim?
Yes, I can answer the first, last question if that's what I see. I see half the members of council waiting for an answer. So, uh, the last question you mentioned about if this comes up again, my recommendation is if we hit that again, is we will cut services and not use one-time funding for this purposes. We're telling you we need to reset the budget and stop doing that. It doesn't become the right thing to do when times get tough. And I'm telling you that as the person who probably told you to do it that way 10 years ago or six, seven years ago, or I wouldn't say I told you, but allowed you to. So, so I'm, I'll tell you this time now, I'm not going to sit here year after year telling you it needs to come out, years come out. Now, next year, I'm going to say, no, it's okay. So...
So today we have these one-time funded agencies. So when we move them into the budget process, are they still under the same type of oversight as they would be as a one-time funded organization?
Yes, and in fact, including what we just proposed as far as putting them into the, that contract type performance review type process and the financial reporting as well. So yes, it would be included that way.
And, um, this amount of cash is pretty insignificant in the overall total budget, correct?
Compared to the total, the general fund budget's like $65 million of ongoing expenses.
Yeah, so it would just seem to make sense. We didn't, wouldn't have to go through the brain damage every year making this decision. If we just put it into budget since we've been funding it anyway. So that's kind of where I'm leaning. And, uh-
Yeah, Mayor Coombs, members of council, you give us that direction, we will make it a high priority to use ongoing dollars to get it funded next year. I'm not going to say that it's, you know, doesn't take some effort to get it done. Obviously, we haven't been able to do it in the past few years, but we see it as the highest priority on our budget reset list for, for 2016.
Talking about council time.
This is your budget. We use your direction when we put that proposed budget together.
So it just makes sense that we would go ahead and, and put this together that way so that, um, number one, it takes, it allows a lot of these organizations to do their work rather than come to council and spend the whole night or be praring and all that stuff. So, um, that's kind of where I'm leaning. So if that helps. We do have a motion and it's been seconded.
I'd like to speak.
Yeah, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I'm fine with, with moving most of this money in. I have concerns, but, and it may seem I'm picking on them, but I'm not, is the Firehouse. Um, if we're going to have a contract with them, it needs to be adhered to with, and if it's not, it needs to be canceled. I'd like to, you know, uh, have recommendations when it comes up through the budget process if, if that occurs, that we are made aware or we're made aware of it when an infraction of any of these organizations come up. Um, because the presentation we got from the Firehouse last year wasn't very good. I mean, it, it was poor. And that's putting it politely. Um, I have, I've had, uh, I, I know the Council for the Arts, Symphony, Sister Cities, RAC should have always been in memberships. Um, so I, I, and does the, the fireworks show, that's our portion, because I know the, was it the Quanisors give us money for that as well?
That's our-
That's our portion. Okay. All right. Um, and the DDA, you know, the, the DDA shifting more and shifting more of their, uh, events to, uh, ventures and, and hopefully adventures in the arts coalition that they're trying to do. So whether or not DDA continues to do this, we'll just have to wait and see. But, um, I, I do like the idea if other organizations come in for one-time funding, that we get a recommendation from the city manager that's been vetted through various members of staff, um, with his recommendation. I, I, I like that very much.
And we, and we would pull that through our prioritization process. So we would let you know how that would rank against the, essentially, we would present you with all of the, the requests, whether they're internal or external, and provide you with that information in terms of how it ranks and how it can, you know, basically compares.
And I'll vote for this motion. My only concern, and again, I'm, I'm not picking on, is that we need better information from the Firehouse. Um, if not, then I will go line by line and start, uh, removing, um, making motions to remove, uh, remove funding.
This is about the Sister Cities program, which I think is, despite the fact that it's in the fourth quartile, I think it's a very important program. And I think we can make more of it than we have, uh, by making it more of a tour, uh, a visitor and tourist thing, uh, relationship and also a business relationship. But it also is run through the St. Rain School System. So the students are from all over, Niwot, Lyons, some of them. And it would be nice if they would, I don't know if they put in any money, but, you know, it'd be nice that they put in money since their students are available to use our program. This would be a way to, that we wouldn't wind up spending $32,000 on it. We'd, maybe we could get a little bit of money back that way. Just a suggestion.
Okay, I guess we've cut a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
So just so I could check in and verify with the other two, um, recommendations that we've made about performance measurement and, uh, the city manager's recommendations you just talked about. So take that as direction as well, even though it wasn't part of the motion?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, by consensus, we-
Great. Thank you.
So now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I really wanted to, uh, to talk about the horrific events that took place last week in Longmont and where we go from here. And I'm certain that my fellow council members would agree that our heart is with those who were affected by those events. Our hearts are with you. And I would also like to thank Chief Butler for his wonderful words that he gave at his press conference. I've got the Dale disease now. And, uh, I also want to thank Harold and Chief Butler and Karen for meeting with me and telling me, uh, where we're going, where we're headed. And I, I really, uh, in, in, addressing the issue of mental health treatment and options in Longmont. And I really would like us to, to ask our staff to bring back to the whole council that information that they so generously gave me on, uh, on the treatment of mental illness in Longmont and what they've been working on and provide us with that information and with some options going forward in, in what we can do in getting our community to collaborate in the next steps on this issue. So do you need a motion or can we just give you general direction? And if we could do that right away, I'd really appreciate it. I also, of course, want to have a business of the week because it just wouldn't be a week without a business. Uh, I actually did go to a new restaurant called The Roost at 526 Main this last weekend. Great food. I had great service. I understand they have a Sunday brunch as well and live music. Uh, once again, you should try The Roost at 526 Main Street.
I think I just wanted to, first off, uh, thank Brian Dagley for handling the city during some really rough times while I was, uh, gone to Washington DC. Um, you know, it was pretty tough to not be here when all that was happening, but I knew, you know, I could have turned around, jumped on a plane, but there was nothing I could really do outside of just being in contact. And, uh, I have my ultimate faith in the city leaders. And I was just so impressed when I heard the, the tape of the 911 operator. I mean, that just goes to show the training. I mean, I can't imagine being in that situation, being so calm, so focused to get the information extracted. I mean, that was just a remarkable, remarkable job. And that just goes to show what great training she must have had for that to kick in. And that, uh, I mean, if, if anybody hasn't listened to that tape, I mean, I just can't imagine even one sentence that she could have done any better. Um, so I, I just, my hat's off to Public Safety and Mike Butler and the training that goes into those people to handle a situation like that. So, um- Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I too echo Councilman Finley's sentiments. Mental health is something that kind of puts, gets put on the back burner. Nobody really wants to talk about it. Nobody really wants to do anything about it. It's not, um, that obvious disease where your leg falls off or whatever. So it's, it's one of those things that not only is it a tough problem to, to deal with, but it's also a tough problem to even identify the need. Uh, and I think that requires us to invest in other resources in order to be able to reach out and- Uh, and I think that requires us to invest in other resources in order to be able to reach out into the community and understand the needs and talk to people, understand where they're having struggles and what issues they're having. And that doesn't come by just talking about it at council. It comes by action by the city, the community, faith-based organizations. The council here is part of that discussion, and I would like to make sure that we don't drop the ball on this. I do have one other thing tonight. Um, Youth Council been working on this anti, or this vandalism awareness program now for about a little over a year. And Mayor Coombs, you showed us your videos, um, a couple of weeks ago. Well, tonight, at Youth Council, they presented the awards to, for first and second place, a two-hundred-dollar check to, um, for first place and a hundred-dollar check for second place, as well as some honorable recognition, um, to one young person. Wasn't even eligible for the contest and submitted, probably would have been my pick for number one. So she's a fifth grader and has to be a sixth grader. So now we're looking at, you know, first year we ran it, so maybe we need to tweak it. But the amazing set of videos came in, um, and they'll be made available on Channel Eight as well as some YouTube programs. So you can kind of see, they're short, less than a minute, little, little hashtag type things, and you just go in there and, uh, it's, it's an important project. It sounds like it's going to be an ongoing video contest every year. The other comment I'll have about that is it was, I was amazed that it was the middle schools that got involved with the contest, not the junior high or not the high school. So even though now we may be, we can even target it even closer to a group that's more interested in actually doing this. So it was a great project and it's ongoing, so.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. A couple of things from my boards. Uh, David Slater, the new airport manager, uh, the Airport Advisory Board met last night. Um, special meeting, uh, since David is now a city employee and welcomed him to the board. Um, thank you, Sean Lewis, for being the temporary, uh, airport manager. Some good experiences learned by, uh, by Sean. And, uh, so David had his first board meeting yesterday, as well, roughly an hour later, golf board met. Um, there are some members of the golf board who are under the impression, under the impression that the council is unaware of the needs of golf board, especially when it comes to, uh, infrastructure as far as the irrigation systems at both Sunset and Twin Peaks. Um, I've twice tried to make it abundantly clear that not only with the, uh, the flood of two thousand thirteen, but other budgetary constraints in the, in the general fund, that, um, uh, unfortunately, if those systems broke, right now, there's, right now, there's no funding source to replace those, uh, those systems. Um, they are, again, concerned that members of council are not aware. Um, I do recall a while back, we had an assessment of, of golf services. So it was made abundantly clear that those, uh, systems were old. Sunset is old, is just about as old as I am, and Twin Peaks is just a little bit, uh, younger. And of course, the twenty-year, um, we're coming up on twenty years at, at UTE, so that system may have to be looked at as well. So I would just hope that we can try to find some creative ways to, uh, take care of the infrastructure of, uh, of those facilities. The other thing is, um, I saw John Clark today, and apparently John is retiring Friday. And somehow, I, we missed that email. I didn't get it. Um, so I saw John, and he says, you know, "I'm retiring Friday, so thank you to John Clark." Um, always calm, always very good at giving presentations. Um, his, you know, I asked him what he was going to do, more photography, more time with grandchildren, and more travel. So, um, all the best to John in his future endeavors. Um, and, uh, I really appreciate his, um, uh, him being on staff and also, uh, giving some counsel to me on various items. Lastly, um, we talked about the Japan trip a while back, and we acquired funding. Um, I'm unable to go to Chino this year. So putting it out there, if, uh, I know Councilmember Christensen's going, um, she would be the lone person going. Um, but I am unable. So if you guys want to talk some more yourselves, best of luck. Um, but, uh, that's something to consider.
Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. A couple of things. Uh, next week, I'm going to be making three motions. And rather than talking to people off, offline, I figured I'm not going to make the motion tonight. This will give us a week to think about it and talk about it. Dave's like, "Oh, my gosh, what now?" Um, there's three pieces. One, and I've mentioned it before, but I'm going to be making the motions next week. One is I'm going to ask, uh, for support. I, I think we should ask, uh, city staff to look at potential open space acquisitions in Ward One, the east area of town. Specifically, there's some sections there that would make the open space circle or barrier around Longmont contiguous. We can debate on open space and good, bad, but the point is, we started doing it decades ago. And, uh, in order to have that continuous circle of open space, um, there's specific sections up there in Ward One that I'd like to see added right along Highway sixty-six. Um, number two, uh, I think, uh, city council last month, we all met with, uh, city staff talking about Mead's request to, uh, renew our IGA and city boundaries and whatnot. As I was looking over the, uh, as I was looking over the, uh, uh, the map, uh, I saw that there was, uh, there's a lot of holes, like I said, with the open space out, out east, and there's this current land battle going on with Mead and, uh, yeah, Mead and Firestone and Frederick, and they're all over the place. Um, I'd also like staff to explore and bring back the options for actually passing a resolution or ordinance, whatever would be proper, um, limiting the sale of water to cities that wanted to actually build up against our border. Um, I would hate to see us build a mall and then have commercial development just outside our city. And so that is one way to buy open space cheaply, so to speak. Um, and then last but not least, um, on the other side of that open space, uh, we already know that there's going to be development along Highway sixty-six to I-25. Um, uh, when I talked with Gordon Pedro about it, he already thought that the city, um, had a, uh, the comprehensive plan extended out to I-25. In fact, it does not. I am not going to be making a motion that we alter our forever adopted, and I think we should continue to follow the idea that Longmont should be a non-contiguous city. In other words, have a border around us and be our own identity. However, I would like the city to look into the idea that we should also be inviting, uh, those property owners along Highway sixty-six on the other side of the open space out to I-25 to possibly annex into our city. Uh, it's going to be, uh, uh, it's going to be built anyway, and there will be tax revenues built. And there's a question of do we control it or do we not? And right now, everybody's fighting over it because it's develop, land that is developable, or develop, anyway, it's late. Developable? Is that right? Okay. And so, uh, the point is, I think we should at least look into it, rather than sitting back and then finding ourselves, you know, basically kissing Mead, Frederick, and Firestone with commercial and residential properties and on the eastern slope of Longmont, so to speak. We have no choice, no decision, no open space. So I'll be making those motions next week. We can talk, debate, talk to your people, whatever you do. And, uh, we can chit chat next week during, uh, our council comments. And then last but not least, I think, uh, Chief Butler, I echo everything that happened. I think that, uh, mental illness is a, is a big deal, and I think it's funny that everybody always talks about it as if they're not a problem. I've got mental illness. The last time I was diagnosed with severe depression, not severe, mild, severe, whatever, nine years ago. And I was put on Lexapro. It was life-changing for me. And, uh, I tell everybody I'm on it. I advocate that we should get rid of the fluoride and replace it with Lexapro. You know, and, and every year, I go into my doctor, and he's like, "Hey, you're doing great. Do you want to, uh, get rid of your Lexapro?" I'm like, "Hell, no. It's a happy pill. It's great." So, I mean, everybody who suffers with mental illness, you're not alone, you know, I, I'm one of them. So, uh, vote for me. No, but the, uh, the, so yeah, so I think it's a, a big step in starting to just admit that it's not that big of a deal. You just got to get treatment, and it gets better. It's just like anything else, so.
Councilmember Levinson.
I, you know, I think that what happened last week, um, really did shake everybody to the core because we all thought that that could never happen to our community, maybe. And I think everybody has realized that sometimes, you know, it's all just random. And, um, I've had some back and forth with folks, thinking that these are the crimes of the big city. But, you know, we're reminded time and time again of the demons of mental illness when, you know, there are moms in small towns in, in Arkansas that take their three children and drown them in the bathtub. And, you know, what happens in, you know, small towns in the south, it happens in, in the west, it happens in the big city. Um, and I guess we do have to think, um, more, I won't, maybe the word generously is not the correct term about those afflicted with mental illness. Um, you know, in, in centuries gone by, they would chain people to walls, and they would have no treatment. And they would, uh, people would be abused, and then they would continue to lose their minds. Um, and, uh, you know, in my family's history, my father was, um, chief of staff of a VA hospital that was a, um, mental health facility. And, um, it, uh, you know, they tried to do the best they could for all those veterans. And they had the influx of the Vietnam veterans coming back with PTSD and other things. But they had everything from, um, veterans who had served in the Spanish-American War all the way through Vietnam. And, um, you know, I think part of the challenge with, with, um, treating mental illness is not just, um, giving someone a medication, which is the easy thing, um, many times, but also spending money on actual therapeutic services, one-on-one. Um, and that's more expensive. Um, but I do know that in our community, part of the flood relief was also, and I think council will remember, um, some money devoted to helping people work through the personal devastation and what their mental health aspect was, um, following, um, their loss of property and ongoing challenges. So, um, I think we've helped people there. Um, I also want to thank our, um, public safety staff. Um, some people got to see, uh, and experience both those tragedies, and my heart goes out to them and how they can be that strong. And, um, I also want to compliment the volunteer acupuncture group who came in and donated services. That was an incredibly generous thing to do. And, um, you know, I just really think we are truly blessed in this community to have well-trained staff that can bring the community through these things. Um, and my heart goes out to those families because it's such a tragedy all, all the way around. Um, and, and none of us, I, I think a lot of the council members really internalized these, these, uh, events from last week. I can see that. Um, you know, um, on a, a different note, um, one of the things I'd like to reach out to staff about is that one of the sponsors of that community resiliency workshop that the French Embassy hosted was the Rockefeller Foundation. So I do have some information about their support of community resiliency. And I wish I would have known that you were doing that grant, because having somebody attend that from the city, you know, might have helped a little bit, or if there's any other thing we need to, to plug that we could send a thank you letter thanking them for, you know, supporting that, that effort. Um, and, uh, there was some very good information from, um, that workshop. The other thing is, I did, last week at Neighborhood Group Leaders Association, there was a little send-off for John Clark. And, um, the other thing is, they did show the, um, winning entries to the, um, anti-vandalism campaign. And, uh, the NGLA members were very, very excited to see those videos. And then they also talked about the sticker shock campaign with preventing minors from, uh, purchasing alcohol or adults to buy it for them. So, uh, thanks to all on council for, um, you know, all the work we've done and, and shouldered this week.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, um, I want to thank you, thank Councilwoman Bagley for what he said. It echoes also what Chief Butler said, of course, that there's probably nobody in this room who hasn't had some dealings with mental illness, either personally, I mean, themselves, or in their family, or their friends. And sometimes it can be cured with pills, but more often than not, it's, it's a long-term problem that is extremely difficult. If you look throughout history, no one has ever known how to take care of some people. Some people really need to be sheltered permanently so they don't hurt everybody. But people who are mentally ill are usually not able to advocate for themselves or navigate the way to get help. So if you know somebody is struggling, do what you can to help them, because they honestly often can't help themselves. And they just need somebody to say, "Let me help you do what I can, okay?" And, um, so anyway, I, I also would like to say thank you to the hospital workers who had to, uh, also deal very well. I mean, from what I've heard, they were magnificent in dealing with the, the terrible results of these two horrible incidents. And, um, that's very difficult for them too. So thank you for all the fine people in our community who dealt with a very sad week.
Councilmember Thompson.
Mayor Coombs, uh, to wrap this up, we're going to have to extend the meeting a little bit for, uh, city manager and deputy city attorney remarks. So I move that we extend the minute to, uh, complete the agenda.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, I think we're done with the council and mayor remarks. So city manager, any comments?
Uh, Mayor, council, I think, um, from an organization standpoint, I wanted to say that, um, the work that was done by folks throughout our organization, um, related to the events, um, last week, whether it's public safety, um, even in community services, was, um, amazing work in some very, in a very trying situation. Um, and I also want to thank the community. I had a chance to talk to some, um, public safety folks, and they wanted to make, they made the comment of how supportive everyone has been to them regarding the situation and, and helping them through this process. And so I wanted to give a big thank you to the community for supporting our folks. Um, we had a number of folks, um, related to this tragedy where it actually hit close to our organization, even in our community services area. Um, and, and, and again, I think they were supportive for families and, and provided assistance where you don't, we don't see it. And, but they were there and they were supporting the community in different ways. And so big, you know, again, thanks to the organization, thanks to the community, thanks for the support during this process, because it means a lot to those departments when they're going through these types of situations. So I wanted to, to say that. Uh, and I wanted to thank you all. Um, you all talked to us, you asked what we needed. I had those conversations with each and every one of you. Um, and, and, and that it means a lot to the organization. We never really get a chance to tell you this, but it does. Um, and so thank you, uh, for your support during this. Councilmember Levinson, the grant that we were talking about, actually, it's a state grant, and we didn't realize that this was going to be part of it until, I think, last week. And so it was a bit of a fire drill for us in pulling all of this information together. So that's why we didn't mention it, but now that we know that, I think we need to follow that up. On another note, um, what, what, excuse me. On another note, what I did want to talk to council about, uh, tonight during city manager comments is that, um, as you all know, we have been in the process of implementing, uh, the Next Light project, and we have began, we have begun the build-out process. Um, in response to high community demand, um, Longmont Power and Communications, Next Light, um, is speeding up the construction of, of the fiber optic system. the fiber optic system. And the computer died on me. It's coming.
Oh, you lost it.
With the increased people power that we have in the process, we have been bringing on a number of install technicians. One of the things that has also happened is that the contractor that we're utilizing in this process actually just recently finished a project in Taos, New Mexico, so they were able to bring more staff to support the build-out here. So we are going to speed up the schedule. So as you can see, you see Phase One where we started in August 2014. Phase Two will start in April of 2015. One of the big changes is Phase Six, the construction start will start in April of 2015. It was actually scheduled in Q1 of 2017. Phase Five, Quarter Four of 2015. It was Quarter Three of 2016. Phase Three, Quarter Two of 2015. It was Quarter Three. And Phase Four, Quarter One of 2016.
Point of order.
I missed out a point of order. I just want to know, what's the southern border of Phase Four there? That's a really important question. Screw the rest of you. I just need to know. Was that 17? Oh, what a block! I could have moved had you told me the boundary, they were different places.
So I did want to say that we will be issuing a press release from LPC and Next Light talking about this issue in more detail. Again, this is another one of those big thank yous to the community. They have supported us through the process. The response to the service that we're providing has been great. If we look at the first group, and when I say the first group, I'm not talking the first phase, but the first group where we had the introductory offer for $49.95, right, Tom? Where we had that first offer, we have finished the three-month cycle and we are at about a 45% take rate within the first three months. Remember when we talked about the pro forma? We talked about a 37%. So I know there's been some questions on this. So I just wanted to let you know, we are trying to provide this service to our residents as quickly as possible, but do it right. And that is the intent that we have as we continue moving forward. So some folks are moving up in the process. Do you have any questions? Does council have any questions? Tom and I are here to answer.
Kudos and great job. I'm excited.
Great work happening on the implementation.
Thank you for my neighborhood and I did my little happy dance.
The one thing I will say is that we also realize that we are in a competitive environment, so we're always looking at opportunities where we can take advantage of situations that present themselves where we can move faster. And so there will be things that we do internally as they see opportunities present themselves. This was a pretty big change and we wanted to let council know tonight and get the information out to the public.
Great. Okay, awesome.
No more comments.
Deputy City Attorney, any comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned.